Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting of the City Council regular meeting, March 27, 2025, at 6:30 to order. Now, I'd like to invite Pastor Joe Robinson to give our invitation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the invitation. Let's bow our heads and lift our hearts. Oh, Sovereign God, we come to you this evening, Father, understanding that you are in control of everything. We come humble as we know how in the name of Jesus Christ. By the guidance of the Holy Spirit, we ask for your presence here this evening. Father, we ask that you guide this proceeding. We know that there are names that people are going to disagree on, Father, but we know that you have the answers. Father, sometimes it's going to be win-win, even sometimes it's going to be lose-lose. But, Father, you are able to direct it the way that you would have it to go. That is to the benefit of all. We ask every heart that's beating in this room, dear God, submit themselves one way or other, whether they believe or don't believe, to the understanding that they need help and direction. From I, what I believe, and so many others, is the only righteousness that exist. We ask the hearts of everyone that are here, be turned to the righteousness of the people. Guide them, dear God, in the direction, Father, that everyone, everyone will benefit. Father, the decision-makers, I pray the blood of Jesus upon them, so that, Father, that their decision, as they hear the voice of the people, will be to get your will done, Father, for the benefit of all. Father, I pray for this city. I pray for the problems that we are having. Father, we ask that you give us the wisdom to clean them up. Father, you know what they are before they even happen. But we thank you for giving us the opportunity, dear God, to state our concerns, to state our opinions. We ask you, dear God, to make sure that we are doing it for your glory and not ours. Be with us and guide us is our prayer. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in whatever capacity that we have. Father, let the elected officials here know that they are the servants of the people, but they still have to answer to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Robinson. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Before we get started, at the request of staff, we'd like to remove item 6G, correction, 6J, which is the ad valorem tax abatement for tax year 2024, Bricks Project Brewery LLC.
Do you mean eight?
Move to remove item BJ.
AJ.
Yeah, I said six, eight.
AJ from the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Do I make cards on the removal? We're going to remove an item, Mr. Johnson, from consent agenda. Thank you. All right, any discussion from Counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, City Manager.
We're two minutes.
So, any, I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any corrections, or can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on January 28, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion from Counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
No boards and commissions, were to petitions and requests.
That was quick. Petitions or requests?
Rhonda Stover, 2485 Heritage Drive. "So have no fear of them, for nothing is covered that will not be revealed, or hidden that will not be known." Matthew 10:26. It gives me great pleasure to say to Scott Lurie, sayonara and adios. Your tenure reign of terror is over. However, I would like to remind everyone that retirement and resignations do not absolve any one of their past actions. I am here on behalf of the Heritage Drive Coalition once again. I'm here to present facts that cannot be disputed and follow up on my email to city officials yesterday. With that said, I'm going to thank Kevin Cook personally for returning my email and for just now speaking with me. He is determined to help us, and for that, we say thank you. And Ms. Moskowsko, we thank you for being a representative of the people. We are here because this was the city's idea, you have it upside down, was the city's idea last year of a job that was finished, because they did not want to expose this. The city has lied to me and my neighbors for decades. This city has confirmed ownership of that wall they said they didn't own, as evidenced by placing thousands of pounds of dirt and rock on it. And now we have to address the damage done to our properties by this city. The city knew in 2002 that their refusal to maintain said canal was causing damages, as evidenced by this letter signed by Charles Denham in 2002. He knew then, they repaired the wall. Let me remind you that local governments don't repair private property. This city knew in 2002 and did nothing. That is why I am here. That is why I will thank Kevin Cook right now for this, but I would like it seen through, and I'd like every one of you to make sure it happens. I've had enough. My neighbors have had enough. This city has had enough. If you can use taxpayer money to retain a law firm to represent you all, you can fix my property. Sunlight is the best disinfectant. It's time for truth to come to light. If you think we will be going away, you have learned nothing this past year. Ten business days should be more than enough time for you to put your collective heads together and start forward movement and restoring our properties due to malfeasance by the city and its officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Cook. Didn't we vote the last meeting to take down this wall? Or was that a different wall?
Different location.
Different wall, okay. Member Nelson?
So, do we determine it is our wall?
We constructed a rocker vetment along the Heritage Ditch. We haven't completed all the work, but we have completed most of the installing soil and rock restoring the north shore of the ditch. Now, we're working on the south side, which is bordering the apartment complex.
Okay. So, we're shoring it up, but is the wall ours or not?
The wall's on the property line. It's not been determined ownership, but we have placed a northern, there's enough fill restored back to the north side now that the wall's effectively buried under at least three feet of fill and rock.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Ma'am?
Lisa Moser, 525 Indian River Avenue. Evening. We all recently were reminded in the last few weeks by the passing of two women who had put their hearts and souls into making our community the best it could be, quietly helping those in need, proving that Titusville is a special place. Titusville has had its ups and downs, but the residents have always figured out a way to bridge their different opinions on how to move forward on any issue. I'm here tonight to say that many of us in our community back only not the men and the women of our police department, but also the Chief of Police, John Lau. They have come under a cloud of uncertainty lately, and instead of letting the issues go through the proper channels as they have in the past, there are those who want a decision made without all the facts. I don't have the facts. I can't make a decision until facts are in. We should say to those who will be the decision-makers to wait and make an informed decision once all the facts are in. One of those women was taken away from our community by pure evil. We cannot let those who want to divide this committee, community, divide us. Having different opinions is fine. Having different ways to handle them is okay. However, attacking and making assumption about issues without facts is not the way to handle city business. This is to the fine men and women and Chief Lau. We support you. We are thankful for all that you do in our community, whether you do it behind the scenes or in a spotlight. We are not fair weather supporters, as some may be, especially considering many of the social media posts lately. But supporters during the ups and downs, we are not perfect, but we are Titusville, and we applaud all of you of the police department.
James Troutman, 1705 Barn Avenue. How are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
I come before you for a request, actually. What I would like, as a newly appointed alternate to the VAA, which I'm gratefully grateful that I got appointed to that, I've been informed that so planning and zoning is the only one that allows their alternates to partake in communications and things of that nature. What I'd like to request from Counsel today, to have conversations, to make alternates in other boards, to be able to have communication with that board when they're having their proceedings, I feel that would be good experience for them, to be able to at least have communications. And so, when they go and have to sit on that board, for whatever reason, someone not there, I feel that that would be a good experience for them to transition into that. And that's all I'm requesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yeah. Member Nelson?
James, come back, come back, come back, come back. I'm sorry. So, with a lot of the boards, alternates participate in the discussion, although they don't vote. So, are you saying BAA? You're not allowed to participate in the discussion?
That's what's been told to me, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That the planning and zoning is the only board that allows that communication, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
And so, if that is the case, I'm just requesting that that be something y'all talk about, maybe make a motion for, have those communications.
Mr. Broom, can you sort of enlighten us?
As he said, that's my understanding. I think planning and zoning might have even amended their bylaws. I have to look at that to allow for that, but that would be the only one that has done that, because, you know, they do make recommendations. We do have some boards, you know, such as, it used to be code board, now have magistrate, VAA that does make decisions on quasi judicial. But if that's something that, you know, Counsel wants us to look at, we can certainly look at that.
I would be interested in seeing us look at it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Remember, sorry, Member Stokel?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, what your request is that you would like to participate during the meeting, even if you don't have a vote? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to be able to have that communication, build that experience. So, if, you know, some person that does not attend, we come up to sit on that board, we're somewhat at least interacting now, and it's not a, hey, come and sit and, all right, take place, right? I think that builds that experience for that individual.
Anything else? Member Stokel? Thank you. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I've noticed some of the alternates sitting in the audience, they don't have a computer, they're not able to follow along with what's happening. So, I definitely would would agree. I think that they need to get that experience. I'm just like in planning and zoning, where they sit over, just prepare them. So, thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I request a visability on bringing this back to us?
Are you going to make a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Anybody want to weigh in from the audience on this motion for a visability? All right, see you now. Any further counsel discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Member Nelson. Thank you, Mr. Troutman. And then, I believe you are next, Ms. Kay.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. Just to segue off of that, I would like to see the Board of Adjustment and Appeals be video recorded every single time. This is a very important meeting that can be appealed to City Council. We need to know what's going on, as well as a TEC. All these city hall meetings need to, we need to find the budget. The people need to know. We need to know, you need to know what happened at that BNA meeting, at all the BNA meetings. So, how will you know unless you go to them? So, please, find it in your hearts to ask for a budget, to make these all be recorded, video recorded. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Mr. Johnson?
Stan Johnson, 860 Pointset Avenue. I'm also a former employee, engineer, and surveyor licensed, who now worked for the city of Titusville and have a pension from the city. I'm here to, we're talking about something you don't want to hear about, and that is this, the sewage, the sewage leak. And so, what I have done is that I contacted Phil Archer, I contacted the governor, and I've talked, called to FD, I've contacted FDP to, in other words, to, to come down on city Titusville, because what you're doing is illegal. It's been going on for about four years. Spraying women, children, and babies with piss and poop. Now, I'll tell you what, my grandmother, my mother, my father, all would say that what you're doing is wrong. As a professional engineer, I'm saying that you're wrong. I've asked you repeatedly to get a professional engineer that will dispute me. I want you to know, as a professional engineer, I have forty, over forty thousand other Florida professional engineers that say you're wrong, that will not dispute me. And yet, what do you do? What does the city still do? You still have unwritten policy, as explained repeatedly by Jo Lynn Nelson. It's disturbing to me that Mr. Cole talked about that make sure that he wants to agree with, have unity in your decisions, so that you will contact other people, make sure he's not going against some kind of policy by the city. Well, this is what we have. We have a policy, an unwritten policy, to spray women, children, and babies with piss and poop. Any mother who changes a diaper knows that this is wrong. It's wrong. So, how can this city, city is the only city, now, so I've contacted the governor, and I've sent him a letter today that you got copied, you, about this very issue. And you guys, he doesn't respond at all. We can't get a response. Not only did I approach you, the Titusville Environmental Commission has approached you to say, please, stop it. What do you do? You continue it. So, I'm disgusted, and it's disgraceful what you're doing. I don't think anybody's hearing me. I think that the people here should listen to this, ask the questions. I should not be the only person who complains about this. What you have is a double standard. You won't have your children out there doing it, but you'll have visitors and guests from other countries go out to Spaceview Park and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'm asking for another minute.
I can't give it to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident, and, as you know, daughter of police officer. I too am very supportive of the police. I am not supportive of hidden decisions made about the contract for Chief Lau by our outgoing person. However, I didn't come to talk about that today, so just remind you, no one responded to that last time. I told you before, I have a doctorate in epidemiology, and I was the past chair of the Department of Epidemiology and Biostatistics at the University of South Florida. What I want to do is discuss the issue of the 17,700 emails that resulted from Andrew Connor's false accusation of petty theft. I do rather like thinking of these things in terms of numbers, and 17,700 is a very large number. We already know it's going to cost the citizens a tremendous amount in outside legal expenses, since the two attorneys we currently pay to protect the city are somehow not capable of representing us in this matter. And we're going to be paying these outside attorneys 250 an hour. But let's look at this issue in terms of prior costs. Let's assume that the average time of writing one of these emails is two minutes. I believe, if anything, this is an underestimate, but that's okay. Some of the emails have been sent to multiple recipients, so that should even out in the long run, as many took much longer than two minutes to compose. Seventeen,700 multiplied by two minutes equals 35,400 minutes of staff time. Thirty-five,400 minutes divided by sixty minutes in an hour equals 590 hours. Five-hundred-and-ninety hours divided by a forty-hour work week equals 14.75, the minimum amount of time that's been devoted to these emails. These wasted hours are times the staff could be addressing the needs of citizens, answering your calls, or emailing people about legitimate concerns. Going back to those 590 hours and using very conservatively the minimum wage in Florida of $13 per hour, the lowest possible cost of these emails was $7,670. We can also be sure this is a gross underestimate for two reasons. It's highly likely that the majority of these emails were written by minimum wage employees. And secondly, this estimate did not consider the amount of time it took recipients to read these emails. We've already wasted well over $7,670 in 590 hours because of these charges. But reviewing 17,700 emails would clearly be very costly. And what is the benefit to the citizens? None that I can see. But Andrew Connor showed he would do anything to get to be mayor, and now the bill to the citizens for that anything is coming due.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
I want to address something. Kathleen, I don't want to pick on you, but I'm going to address something that we discussed last time. We were talking about our form of government while we were talking about salaries, and why didn't the salaries come before Counsel? So, the form of government we have is a counsel, city manager, form of government. So, what happens is we set policy, but we are not responsible for the individual employees of the city. That belongs to the city manager. He negotiates that, he works on that. We can't direct them, we can't, we really have nothing to do with the staff. Sometimes we discuss problems with them, but our job up here is to set a policy. So, in other years, we've set a policy, let's work on the Indian River Lagoon, let's work on infrastructure. I think Tony suggested arts, we added that to it, but that's our job, as opposed to the Nelson fault. Does that make sense?
It does. I appreciate that fact, but the problem is that this decision was made by somebody who was a link duck, and before, as far as I know, at least we should be able to get answers to my questions. I can read my answer to you.
No.
I just want to know how it happened. When was that contract due to be renewed? If it was due to be renewed, when he did it? But no one's telling me that, and I have to kind of try to find it, because nobody will ask. That's a valid question.
That's a valid question. I don't mind getting the answers to it. We did, we do discuss business. Usually, we meet with the city manager every other week for an hour or two, and a lot of times, those kind of issues come up, but we'll find out.
So, that's a question for me. Thank you. I very much appreciate it if somebody would find out.
All right, thank you. Dwight?
Say again.
You have the floor, Dwight.
Mr. Sigler, we're not friends, so.
Okay. Name an address for the record, Mr. Sigler.
Say again.
Name an address for the record.
Dwight Sigler, and I don't get my address. The city of Titusville has approximately 50,000 residents. Member Nelson, last meeting, special meeting, you made a statement to the doctor that Chief Lau has the lowest salary in the area.
Say what? Sorry. He has his three minutes, please.
Okay. That's not, that was not, that was not true. The city of Titusville Police Chief currently has a salary of $173,000 prior to his increase of $188,000, which is in line with other populated cities of this size. He has the highest paid salary of police chiefs. He has the highest paid salary of police chiefs. The population of Fort, Fort Pierce has forty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-four people. Their chief makes a hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. The city of Oakaway has forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one people, and their police chief salary is a hundred and sixty thousand five sixty-five. The city of Clermont has forty-eight thousand, and their police chief makes a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. The Titusville Police Chief makes more than the city police chief of Melbourne and Palm The city of Melbourne's population is eighty-six thousand nine hundred. And the, and the city of Palm Bay, and they pay their, their chief a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and six thirty-five. The population of Palm Bay is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and their police chief makes a hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Therefore, Member Nelson, John Lau's salary is not the lowest in the area. So before you make those statements in a public meeting, you should have your facts together, because somebody is going to backcheck you.
Thank you. All right, I would like to go next.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Larice, I think we're going to have a lot of questions about this tonight, so I think it's easier if we just put it out there so people know, and then that's the information that we have. So I am going to ask, when was, and if you don't have this information, I'll come back to you in a few minutes, but when was the last contract renewed, and for how much? And then the one before that, when was that renewed? Because I think that's going to give people answers, and then perhaps that will help with some of the questions that we receive. If you have those answers, thank you.
Sure, sure. The HR department negotiates contracts when they're up, and that was done with Chief Lau's contract, and I signed it.
So the, but can I have the date, and then the amount, and then the previous one and the amounts?
I, I don't have the date, but the salary amounts were done by comparative analysis.
Okay, I think we have it in our emails. I can send it to you if you'd like.
I don't have it on me, no?
I can send it to you.
I'm not at the email.
You don't have email now?
No.
Ma'am.
Before, again, I have, it's really deep, it's an advertisement from the Star Advocate from January 2nd, nineteen twenty-five. Melinda Villan, and I live in the historic Indian River City neighborhood. December 31st, nineteen twenty-five, saw the opening of Cheney Highway and the formal opening of Indian River City. That's right, one of your oldest neighborhoods officially turns one hundred this year, and you guys have totally forgotten about us, the neighborhood plan, and the promises you made to the residents to protect, protect the historic neighborhood. So, history lesson. Settled in the late eighteen hundreds as part of the Dallas-Plyden Land Grant, Captain James Pritchard and my wife Mary Boyd tried their hand at citrus farming before one of the freezes in the eighteen nineties made them nope up to Titusville and that, build that pretty yellow house downtown. In the early nineteen hundreds, E.W.L., which knew history info for the city, I believe his house is still standing, anyway, he and his business associates formed the Titusville Fruit and Farmland Company, and bought thirty thousand acres of the old Dallas-Plyden Land Grant, and changed South Titusville forever. How do you ask? Well, all those ditches, a marshy bird lake, you can thank them. They drained the land, including building the Addison Ellis Canal, forever changing the ecosystem, just to sell off fertile farmland. But Indian River City, that was going to be Ellis's crown jewel, a bustling city centered around the old Pritchard Railway Station. He built the Pines Hotel to accommodate buyers, and had a company car to ferry them to the two demonstration farmlands. By the mid nineteen tens, there was the hotel, a grocery store, a post office, and houses starting to be built. In the twenties was a boom of residents and small businesses, a church, a school, and lots of touristy things. Growth slowed in the thirties and forties before a massive boom again in the fifties and sixties with the space race. Then, a bunch of commercial growth with little oversight in the seventies and eighties, with very little land left to build on into today. In twenty twelve, residents came together concerned about the history of our neighborhood disappearing, and developed a neighborhood plan. You adopted it and shined it into your comprehensive plan. All zoning is to refer to the neighborhood plan. And now thirteen years later, the city tells reticence that those protections aren't really there. So businesses get put in that don't belong, social services expand, and commercial intrusion happens. I am asking you to keep your promises. And also, please correct the city street map that has the alleyway next to my house going all the way through, when it was halfway abandoned eighty years ago. And the map also doesn't show the street maintenance map, any of the alleyways from fifty up, and oh, the one hundred and one-year-old alleyway next to my house is now only about fourteen feet across, and I would like that reflected on city maps. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Could I, I have a quick procedural question, if I could, before my time starts?
Yes.
So, I hear you ask people for their name and address for the record. Those people comply. Some say, I don't give my address, some say the police already knows my address. If we're not going to require it, why are we asking for it? I'm happy to give my address. If you can turn on a computer in ten seconds, you could find my address, so. Just seems like it's a simple requirement. If somebody speaks several times, they would give their address once, but just seems like we're disrespecting the rules when somebody refuses. So, I don't know if there's an answer, if that was my question, maybe it was a statement, so, I'll start. Stan Retsch, fourteen fifteen, South Washington. I need three and a half minutes, so I'm going to talk real fast, because I know I'm not going to get extra. But I'm here to talk about the vocal minority. I've been come to city council meetings for forty years, or more. I don't come to all the meetings, I come to the ones that I need to speak out, or that are really important, but I do, like many people, watch every single one, and I watch the PNC meetings, as well as city councils. Back in the, back in the day, we had what was called the Killer Bees. Bee Polk, Ida Blickley, Nellie Strickland, Joan Wheeler, and they would get up and complain about everything. Nowadays, we have Stell, Dan, and Dwight, and Dwight. And it's all negative, nothing positive. These folks, if they won the lottery, they complain about the taxes. Just because somebody from Port St. John says there's corruption to our police department and at our city doesn't mean it's true. Just like I could say it's no one outside, but we know it's not true. Just like we all know there's not corruption in the city. Are we all perfect? Absolutely not.
Hey.
No justice, no peace!
I'm going to caution you.
Prostitute the police!
I'm going to caution you officially, and please do not make me say it again, otherwise I'll have to ask you to leave.
I said, I give you a little more time?
Yes.
Thank you. So again, are they all, are all of us perfect? Absolutely not. But corruption, of course not. For every one of the vocal minority that come up here and complain every week, there's five hundred, a thousand, several hundred people in our community that support our city, our city staff, our city manager, and our police chief. Chief Lau is a thirty-three-year-year veteran of Titusville Police Department, and works more hours than anybody in the city, and never has a day off. For those of you who do not understand what a contract employee is, our police chief, first of all, is not a part-time, he is not a temporary, he's not an interim, he's our police chief. He receives, he receives no additional pension accrual, which could be twenty to twenty-five percent of his salary. He receives no city-paid health insurance. If we could find a new chief with his qualifications, thirty-plus years as a law enforcement officer, twelve-plus years as a chief, FBI Academy grad, and if we could get them at the same salary, it would cost the city forty-five to fifty thousand dollars more than it costs us today. We should all thank him for that. There's no.
Ma'am.
There's no one person who was hurt worse than Chief Lau, when the former city attorney led the charge to gut the city's pension many years ago. Because of that, he only receives a partial COLA, unlike prior chiefs. He receives no pension-paid health insurance for life, like prior chiefs. He was not allowed the drop program, like prior chiefs. Contrary to what, well, I've already said that, he's non-interim or temporary. Indian Harbor Beach Chief, two-point-one square mile city, we have thirty-four square miles. They have twenty-five employees. We have.
Hold on, Mr. Retsch. Member Nelson?
Um, I believe Mr. Retsch said he needed an extra thirty seconds. I don't have a problem with that, so that would be my motion.
I have a motion. Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any council discussion?
Discussion.
Member, Mr. Moscoso?
Are we going to give everyone an extra thirty seconds?
I, again, I'm following the rules of council, and there was a motion, and because people are interrupting him while he's speaking, I believe that is why Member Nelson, maybe, ma'am, I, you do not have the floor. You do not have the floor.
Point of order, I would suggest that they better ask to leave.
All right. Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to leave. You, I'm asking you to leave. All right, I would love to, but unfortunately, that's not the case. And if you do not leave, I'm going to have to ask officers to escort you out.
Leave for what?
All right. Because she's been cautioned multiple times, she's interrupting the proceedings of the meeting. All right. Officers, please, can you remove that lady? Can you remove that woman right there? Yep, yep.
I will peacefully leave. I will peacefully leave. Tremorian Charles, I'm peacefully leaving. I got two feet, two arms, I'm sorry, let me get my stuff, please, because this is very corrupt. This is very corrupt. Another thirty minutes. Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. My bad. Can you read? Period. I'll go this way. I'm going to make my way to the exit. Tremorian Charles, no justice! No peace!
All right, I would like to remind the folks in the audience that if you do not have the floor, please refrain from speaking. We give everybody the opportunity to save their peace, three minutes equally as everybody else. Unfortunately, there was some interruption, and I believe that is why Member Nelson made the motion. Folks, I have asked you, if you do not have the floor, please refrain from speaking. That is the rules of decorum that we conduct in this proceeding. All right. Now, Member Moscoso, would you like to discuss the additional thirty seconds?
No, that's fine, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was because of, but I think that if we can stick to the three minutes.
Absolutely, I'm very, I'm very consistent on it. All right, so we have a motion for additional time for Mr. Retsch, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Retsch.
I'll be quick, thank you. As I mentioned, Indian River, Indian Harbor Beach Chief, who has two-point-one square miles and twenty-five sworn employees, compared to Titusville thirty-four square miles and a hundred and five sworn employees, salary is very similar. If you add in health insurance, pension cost, and other, it's significantly more than the city pays for Chief Lau. I believe we have the best police chief and the best city manager in the city's history. I've worked with the last five police chiefs and the last four city managers.
Thank you, Mr. Retsch. Now, please, when the person has the floor, you got to be quiet, so we can hear them. All right? Well, I don't want to have to caution anybody else. Sir?
I can speak now?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. How you doing, everybody? Cameron Simpson. Uh, you don't need my address, somewhere else you can find me, it's pretty easy. All right, I got simple, five questions I'm going to ask you guys. You can choose to answer or not answer, it's totally up to you, but at the end of the day, we will get answers, okay? All right, answer number, or question number one. Why are there seventeen thousand emails, right, that have either, with a search key that have three names involved? That's your names, Mr. Connors, that's Vicki Conklin, and then that's her also, her campaign manager. Why are there seventeen thousand emails from the time of May of last year to November, that's a six-month period? Why are there seventeen thousand emails, and they're, when they're, you guys were only candidates, you weren't even in the council, nor were you any kind of officials. Can you elaborate on why there were seventeen thousand emails and more?
With my.
With your names on them? With you not even being only candidates at this point, right? Okay, cool. Next question. Why is there little to no public information about our taxpaying dollars and where we're, where it's going? Every time we ask a question about when something was implemented, or when something, you know, was built, or when it came up, you can't tell me when. Okay, that's another one. Okay, no response. Is there a misuse of funds here? Is that where we're getting to? Is that where we're at with it? All right, we'll find that out, too. That was a question for DA's office, I'm assuming, right? Let's go to this third, third one. The city officials have been able to break the law, and nothing's been done about it. If I go outside, and I'm doing, right here is what, thirty-five zone? If I'm doing fifteen and thirty-five, they're going to pull me over, and I ask for my information, I'm going to give it to them, they're probably going to write me a ticket. So why is it anyone else that's a city official gets to break the law, and nothing happens to them? It's just wiped away. Nothing's said, nothing done. That's a problem. And your city. Here's another one. Why are our taxpayer dollars being used to fund a law firm that specializes in civil litigations about the lawsuit that's going on and have to do with this city and its people, right? Why are we funding that? What all they're simply asking for is records, there are public records. Seems guilty a little bit, right? Of whichever, whatever the, the, the case is. It's a problem. Lastly, my last question for you. Why did you not show up to the NAACP meeting after Mr. Charles got killed? I can tell you why, and what you said your reasoning was, you didn't want to be a distraction. How did you not? Mr. Lau showed up, Vice Mayor showed up, but you couldn't be there? That's a problem. And you're for the people? Nah, I don't think so. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you. Who else like to go for petitions and requests?
I'd like to speak in support of a man who is dedic-, who dedicates his life to this city, our police chief, John Lau. In a time when leadership is often thankless, he's led with integrity, fairness, and an unwavering commitment to our community's safety. I know him personally, and I can tell you he's one of the most honorable men I've ever met. He cares deeply about this city, about its people, and about doing what is right. To anyone who thinks he's doing a bad job, or that he shouldn't be in this position, I encourage you to apply for the job yourself. Step into his shoes and see firsthand how demanding and thankless this role can be. It's easy to criticize from the outside, but leadership, especially in law enforcement, requires strength, sacrifice, and an ability to make tough decisions every day. Leadership isn't about avoiding criticism, it's about standing strong in the face of it, and Chief Lau has done just that. I urge this council and our community to recognize his service, his heart, and his commitment. We are fortunate to have him, and I stand with him today.
Thank you. Any other petitions and requests, non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on. City manager. Onto consent agenda items, were items A through N, and we've omitted item eight J. Counsel, are there any questions of staff for consent agenda items A through N? Counsel, would you like to pull any consent agenda items for further discussion? Member Moscoso?
Sorry, can you just give me one second to, there's like fourteen of them.
Yes, I wanted to pull item eight H.
All right, that item is pulled. Any others?
Um.
No, anybody can just pull it. Member Moscoso?
I just have a question about eight G. It's not necessarily to pull it.
Okay, Brad's here, could I answer your question?
Um, so my question is on the urban canopy, and it is, are there going to be ongoing funding that helps us maintain the tree canopy? So once it's developed, how are we going to maintain it? I don't want it to be one of, another one of these projects, another thing, initiative that we have in the city that is not being maintained.
The scope of work is to develop a plan, so through that process, we'll identify what we can and can't, what resources we have available, and what we can accomplish.
But in that plan, can we make sure that we, I mean, I know that plan will probably come again before us, I just want to make sure that we have budgeted for maintenance as well.
Yeah, so the plan will make recommendations, and then you can, you use that information as far as budgeting on an annual basis. Yeah.
Counsel, I'm correct. Uh, counsel, correction, clerk, are there any cards for
We have three.
Okay. Uh, mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the 2024-25 home distribution agreement between Bivard County and the city. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the subordinate agreement for Hope Hammock Affordable Housing Development Loan. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program, SHIP, Holdback Funds Distribution. Consent agenda item 8D, accept the FY '24 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Consent agenda item 8E, approve Amendment 2 for the State Revolving Fund Agreement. Consent agenda item 8F, approve change order number one with L7 Construction for Osprey Screen Project. Consent agenda item 8G, authorize the mayor to sign the Urban and Community Forestry Grant. We've pulled consent agenda item 8H for further discussion. Consent agenda item 8I, approve task order for the Fire Tower Expansion Project. Consent agenda item 8J was removed. Consent agenda item 8K, approve the mutual termination lease agreement and that will be effective 1 June 2025. Consent agenda item 8L, approve the Second Amendment to MOU Welcome Center. Consent agenda item 8M, approve Amendment Number 2 for the Save the Indian River Lagoon Agreement 19109, the Titusville A through G Septic to Sewer Project. Consent agenda item 8N, approve the Huntington Park Subdivision Second Amendment to the Declaration of Covenant Conditions and Restrictions. Thank you, city manager, city clerk.
Yes, sir, Tony Shifalo on item G and H.
Mayor?
Yes?
You want to speak on two items, right?
I wanted to speak
G and H?
Yes.
And since H is being pulled, you'll get three minutes just for H. So if you want to do your three minutes on G, when we pull H
Urban Forest, thank you, sir. I certainly do. I will. I didn't really prepare anything. I came to say, gee whiz, we already had a plan for an urban forest. You weren't here. You weren't here really either. I think you were and you were. And the TEC and the Titusville Tree Team was very active and pulled together a very good plan for an urban forest. It was presented to council and council said, oh, we need an expert opinion. So that's what this grant is about, this $50,000 to spend a couple of years later, when we could have maybe had a couple of trees that would now be a couple of years bigger. And we'll be $50,000 poorer in trees to plant, but we will have a plan. So please do pass that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City clerk?
And then we have Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnson, we're on the consent agenda items. Which items are you going to be speaking on?
He's speaking on A, I, M. He's got three different cards here, so I'm sorry. Item D, E, and F.
Thank you, city clerk. Mr. Johnson, floor is yours.
Okay, uh, I don't know, maybe something new has happened. How many minutes am I allowed?
Three minutes. And then we pulled an item, so there's be an additional three minutes for that pulled item after this.
What do you mean, three minutes per agenda, per?
No, we have three minutes for the entire consent agenda item except for item H, which we'll be discussing individually in a little bit.
Okay, well, I wish they would start the
I'll, I'll ask you to restart it, I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, I'll get three minutes total.
Three minutes for the consent agenda with the exception of item H, which will come up in a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep, city clerk?
Okay. Stan Johnston, 860 points, Ed Avenue. I spoke to you recently about this trespass warning notice at the last meeting and that Mr. Larisse signed that said that I'm supposed to leave his property immediately. And I wasn't even there. So I got another trespass warning notice. It was, I was, I parked my car at the near Sandpoint Park. I came back and drove it home. And about two hours later, I noticed that I couldn't see through the windshield. I don't know how that happened, but it was the sewage. Sewage on my car. So I did, I went, I cleaned off the windshield and left the, left the sewage on there and drew crossbones and skull, skull and crossbones on the hood. And I took it to, started to take it to the Parks and Recreation with Jeff Davis and Jeff said, no, don't, I don't want to see it. Don't bring it here, take it to Water Plant on Garden Street. So I took it to Water, Water Treatment Plant on Garden Street. And I asked, I wanted someone to look at my car, covered with sewage. Well, obviously, they didn't want me there. And I waited, you know, I'd like to say have somebody look at my car.
Mr. Johnson?
This has got to do with
Consent agenda items?
There's two, two items here. It has to do with sewer, well, actually, there's three items. M, uh, let me pull it out here. F and E. It has to do with sewer and water and so forth, sewer. So, and it, so I'm, I'm, I don't like this, spending all this money on the sewer department when you don't answer questions. Like, for example, sewage spill and spraying women and children and babies with sewage. You don't have it. In other words, I, I've told you just recently, I told you just, is that I've got over 40,000 professional engineers in the state of Florida. And you can't get one of them to disagree with me. But the city's policy remains that we will leave those fountains on when we have a spill of sewage. So that's why I'm mentioning this. I don't think, in other words, when we, when we spend more, in this project, for example, F is, it's a $1.7 million project, we're not, we're doing an extra one. So I'm trying to speak on, answer your question, but I guess I'm not going to get extra time for answering your questions. But, uh, what I'm saying is that, is that I don't get answers from Water Resources, I don't get water answers from you, I don't get answers from you, and you should answer the questions about how in the world can you justify this?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Ask for another minute? I don't think I'll get it.
I have Kay Seenong. And then also, I was going to ask if Mr. Davis could let me know which item he would like to speak on.
I think I just, my turn. I just wanted to come and speak behalf of supporting Chief Lau.
Yeah, we're on consent agenda, Mr. Davis. So I'm sorry, you can't speak on that topic, but there is another petitions and requests later on in the meeting. Ms. Kay?
I'm Kay Seenong, Maryland Avenue. I'm speaking on 8G, the Urban Forestry Master Plan. Please authorize the mayor to sign the agreement to create an urban forestry master plan. And a big thank you to all who have been involved in seeking this grant. According to the grant proposal, this plan will implement key findings from the 2023 Urban Tree Canopy Assessment. This assessment indicates Titusville's trees provide $47 million annual, in annual benefits by absorbing 130 million gallons of rainwater, producing oxygen, reducing pollutants, and lowering temperatures, thus improving public health. Increased canopy will bring increased health benefits to residents. Tree canopy varies substantially throughout Titusville, resulting in some neighborhoods with higher temperatures and more pollution. The assessment indicates it can be used to identify the best locations on city-owned property to focus future tree plantings and canopy expansion. The assessment recommends development of a proactive tree program to plant and manage street trees, ensuring healthy trees are distributed equitably across the city. Street trees provide the most benefits as they shade not only the yard, the sidewalk, and the street. They really create lower temperatures and reduce stormwater. Our town could certainly benefit from more well-placed street trees as well. The assessment indicates Sandpoint Parks, 28 acres, are available for sable palms, live oaks, and other native shore-stabilizing species. So trees stabilize the shoreline so the hurricanes don't erode away our parks. FEMA is funding shoreline restoration at Sandpoint Park currently and we're going to start seeing this happen. Once completed, planting sable palms and live oaks along the shoreline would help stabilize the shore and prevent further erosion. Urban forestry master plans and assessments are essential as a guide for managing and expanding tree resources in our community. But reports must, must be followed by implementation of key findings so as to ensure Titusville continues to expand its tree canopy to the, its potential for the benefits of residents, wildlife, aquifers, and the Indian River Lagoon. Thank you for going forward with this urban forestry master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. City clerk, are there any other cards? All right. Member Nelson?
I'm going to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Wait, 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 wait. I. K, L, M, and N.
Okay.
I'm only halfway through.
Second. All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there any further council discussion? Seeing none?
Sorry, I do have, I have one more question, I'm so sorry. On 8M, which is the, approve the amendment to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon SOAR project. I saw, and I, I'm definitely in favor of this. I saw that this is from Septic to Sewer. I saw that the total project cost was 1.3 million and 786,000 is funded by SOAR and then 583,000 is funded by the city of Titusville. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, um, where is that money coming? I mean, that's half a million dollars. Have we been saving up for this or where is that money coming from?
It's already approved project. We have it sitting in our project account now.
It is, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to check because I wasn't sure.
Yes, ma'am, prior years of water sewer rates, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Onto Canaveral Heights, which is your consent agenda item 8H. And it's to direct staff to schedule the public hearings for Canaveral Heights Comprehensive Plan, text amendment, and map amendment. All right, thank you very much, Ms., uh, I'm sorry, Member Stokel.
Yes.
I believe you wanted to pull this, so I'll give the floor to you.
Yes, I pulled it because part of me is wanting to pause on this. During our presentation meeting, I heard some issues regarding reducing our landscape setbacks, some issues concerning incentives for higher density. And I'm just cautious when we are making changes to our comp plan and just because I'm hearing that, part of me wants to pause and wait on this as personally, I feel like I'd like to focus on some other priorities at the time, such as getting our new city manager and other things before we dive into this. That's just my, why I wanted to pull it, especially after hearing our presentation on it.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
I'm not sure I want to pull, hold off on it. But I am concerned that some of the issues we talked about, like the five feet in the back, that we readdress those kind of things. We've sort of put this off for a couple of years because remember, we had our new comp plan and then we divided it up into sections. So I hate to put it off too much longer. But I would like to see, see Brad come back with a couple of changes.
Yeah, that's my thing. I just, I, I don't like to put it off either, but I don't want to implement something potentially in our comp plan that we don't really feel 100% about either.
Yeah.
Just because that is an important document. So that's kind of my thinking. I don't feel like, as of right now, there's, to me, this is not the highest priority. I do know that we invested a lot of time in it. I just think that there's other priorities at, personally, right now, that I want to focus on.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel, Vice Mayor Cole?
Brad, I was going to ask you a question about this. Do we get another bite at this apple? In other words, another review? And will the citizens have an opportunity to review it, to incorporate some of the changes that they have asked for?
Yes, so there were, first set of public hearings will be before planning and zoning and then you. Then if you agree, it'll be transmitted to the state for their comment. It comes back to you, another round of public hearings, just in the comp plan amendments, before planning and zoning, and then you again. And if it is adopted, then the zoning code, the land regulations, will have to be adopted by separate ordinance through public hearings as well. So you have several opportunities.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of pulling that one because I think we'll just be delaying something that, that we need to work on. And it's a long process and it already, already has been a long process.
Yeah, I think they started what, in 2017? Member Moscoso?
I just am thinking about Live Local and perhaps we should delay it until the session's over and we know where that's going because that might influence some of the decisions that we make. So even if it's not a long delay, just until the session's over and we see what they do with that bill, it might be wise so that we don't start moving on something that we have to come back and take out.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. City clerk?
We have one card, it's Tony Shifalo.
Hey, Ms. Tony.
You, you did not have H on your item.
Well, the thing is, when he signed the card, I'm sure he didn't know it was pulled. So now that we've pulled it, if someone's to speak on it, I would give them the three minutes.
Well, right now, it's, uh,
I put it on my card.
It's Ms. Shifalo's turn, so let's give her the floor.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. While I've been over the past eight years going round and round with this, I, I would appreciate yet another meeting with the citizens because now, I want you to know that these young people that have been coming to these meetings, they're in the heart of this area, West Titusville, if you look at your map. And the issues I've been dealing with changing the street category of Tropic Street from a B local street to an A collector-type street so that the sidewalks can be eight feet long in an area that's already well-established with four-foot sidewalks, quite adequate because nobody uses them. They all walk in the middle of the street, Tropic Street, which should not be a well-traveled motor street because of all the bicycles and dog walkers and the electric bikes and the guy that I know you guys see over here by the CVS on US1, the wheelchair with one leg. He uses Tropic Street and Canaveral quite often and frequently. So I've been dealing with that and setbacks, the worries about setbacks and population density and, and the rhythm of the neighborhood being disturbed by three-story buildings where there have been two. And these people have been dealing with their son being shot 15 times and, and, and all kinds of other issues that have come to light as I've become involved in the neighborhood with the CDBG grant that has been going on, the issue there, involved with the concerned citizens. And then, then of course, there's our, our wonderful project, Joinerville and beyond, that just breaks your heart when you read and hear some of the stories that have been revealed about how that neighborhood, West Titusville, which Kim Lee Horn described, has a unique relationship to downtown. You're darn straight, that neighborhood has a very unique relationship to downtown and they've been bringing it into City Hall for the past couple of weeks, months, since. So I think that Brad's suggestion of having another community meeting, and I suggest that we have that community involved in the discussion about how we want to gentrify West Titusville. Thank you so much for letting me speak to you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. Uh, city clerk, I believe there's another card?
Yes, sir. Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 points, Ed Avenue. Tony, I'm sorry, I'm using another fan of white this time. So wait, this is, this is this one. She has to learn. Okay, you can show it to the, so, so this is something that, that was shown at, before. And please just pan over here so that I can see that. I want to see the red lines on this. What is it? You can just walk over across them so that they want to see it closer. Because this is a significant thing, this is going to court. Go ahead, walk closer and walk, walk that way. There you go.
Is this about Canaveral Heights?
Beg your, oh, absolutely. Because here's what's going on, is that, is that the city is doing a number of things. a number of things. What happened three years ago, that, this is, this is over 40 red lines on this project that I have redlined. And what I'm saying is that the proficiency of the city staff is questionable, I question it. I used to do this type of work for the county, and I did it for the city sometime. This is totally unacceptable, there shouldn't be one red line on it. This is horrible. So I'm, I'm questioning whether you've got the expertise in your staff to do what you're doing with Canaveral Heights. I question it seriously. I question it seriously, for example, what I just told you the other day, is how in the world can the city of Titusville allow sewage being sprayed on people? You don't answer. Nobody's gonna answer this. I asked all kinds of questions about, from the fire department, how can you possibly let this happen? Breaking fire codes, breaking police codes, all kinds of codes are being broken. So does the city of Titusville know what they're doing? As far as I can see, no. I told you 40,000 Florida professional engineers disagree, dispute you. So I don't want to talk a whole lot about it, but you've got problems now, that about three years ago, what the city did is they put Peggy Busaka to grant waivers, variances, and so forth. And then you came up with this new committee, DRC, I want you to listen, Megan, the DRC, and they do the same thing. And what are you doing is, they have all kinds of waivers and, and examinations, there's waivers and variances on this project, setbacks, buffers, and so forth like that, and we come up here with a project that's got red lines all over it. It's still that way, it's been reviewed about six times already, changes. So we've got problems, I just want to let you know about, that's very good, thank you, and we're gonna sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
All right, so with this item, either, you know, I would ask that somebody make a motion to approve, or you may make a motion to table, or whatever council decides to do. Member Stokoe?
Yes, I'm leaning towards kind of what Member Moscoso brought up, I think after-session would be a good idea to revisit, I would plan to bring it up during our council reports, but some of us that went to Tallahassee kind of already know some of this, what they're trying to do with Live Local and expand it is crazy, to say the least, but it's already putting restrictions where you can have an apartment go upright in a single-family area, it can go in already, we already know the commercial and industrial, all religious property, I mean, I can list off numerous things, it's reducing parking requirements, you basically won't have controls, things won't come before council, it will be approved outside of council. And this discussion is happening right now, and I just want to make sure that we are very prudent, we're not doing something and unintentionally hurting ourselves because of changes that we make that end up being part of the bill, and now saying all certain types of zoning can be Live Local. So I'm just very cautious right now, especially after being in Tallahassee and seeing kind of the pulse up there, I don't think it would be wise to kind of progress at this time, would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Member Stokoe, and some of the zones that she left out were conservation.
Yep.
And so that is very much on the table in Tallahassee, and something we should be concerned about. Member Nelson?
So, yeah, I was gonna ask you, what do you suspect would be the impact of Live Local on this Canaveral Heights comp plan?
Yeah, potentially, see, just seeing, like, if you just look at the map, potentially the urban mixed use, how, what's being proposed now, and it being that overlay over the R1B, R3, potentially could just say, any property that has that land use or zoning could be Live Local, just like we're seeing it now with commercial. I don't, we don't know yet, just because it's still getting heard through committees, there still can be changes, but to Mayor Connor's point, it's just kind of all over the place, it's conservation, it's religious property, it's R1B right now, I mean, they're proposing a lot, and I'll be quite frank with you, a lot of it is coming because they feel like local governments are being too restrictive on developers, and so this is their way to fight back, they feel like local governments are taking control and not letting developers do certain things, so their mindset is, we're going to lift those if you guys are being too, yeah. So that's kind of their, what, and I get it, if there are local governments that are not representing well, or being too strict, I get that. Unfortunately, what their approach is to do a blanket, well, we're just gonna step in and just cover it all, and hurting a majority of the state because of that, especially those that are being prudent and trying to do proper visioning. They're hearing these long little stories of local governments abusing it and trying to step in and be the savior, essentially, and so that's the discussions that we're having, and it makes me fearful and cautious, because they can make those decisions at that state level, so.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to protect ourselves as we continue to have those discussions.
So we might be better off waiting until after-session?
That's what I would advise.
Thank you, Member Nelson, thank you, Member Stokoe. Yeah, getting the pulse up there, it was pretty evident that they, they were looking to preempt some stuff, and, but also at the same time, I don't think we gotta push the panic button too early, there's a lot that can happen between now and the end of session, and there's a thousand ways a bill gets killed, there's only one way it gets passed, and so I think we got a long way to go, but being prudent and kind of waiting and seeing might make sense. So that being said, and I see no further discussion, I will entertain whatever motion council would like to make. Vice Mayor Cole, it looks like you're gonna push a button.
Yeah, I would move to table this until after the session, and then come back, I think it's prudent that we do it.
Second.
City Attorney, do we need to table it to a date-specific?
No, just after the session's fine.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, City Manager.
We are on to item 9A, which is a quasi-judicial matter, the city attorney will read quasi-judicial procedures, as well as the two ordinances involved.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City Clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council?
Yes, sir.
To staff and applicants, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on the quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. And this, these rules, and of course disclosures, will apply to items A and B.
Thank you very much, City Attorney, does anybody have any disclosures?
I do, I have looked and reviewed the site when it came before us the first time for the Royal Manor Town Homes, I just reviewed it to look at the area, to make, to make an educated decision on it.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Cole, I have also received communication on Royal Oak Town Homes, I met with the engineer and the owners, and they asked me if I had any questions about their plan and what they're doing, so that's it, but it won't affect my judgment, I can be impartial. Any other disclosures? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Rodney Honeycutt.
Wait, we, well, we'll need to read the ordinances for the record.
All right, City Attorney?
Well, in order to the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by amending the future land use designation on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Barna Avenue and Day Street, from the low-density residential to medium-density residential on 5.74 plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers 22, 350903, 21.02, and 22350903, 21.03, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 3, 2025, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map, made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Barna Avenue and Day Street, from the single-family medium-density R1B zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning district, on 5.74 plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers 22, 350903, 21.02, and 22350903, 21.03, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant Rodney M. Honeycutt of Honeycutt and Associates, on behalf of Ken Miller and Charlene Miller, is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with a rezone of approximately 5.74 acres of land located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Barna Avenue and Day Street for the purposes of constructing a multifamily residential development consisting of 43 town home units. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the land use change six to one, with the one member that not voted, did not think it fit the future land use area, and the rezone passed unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you, City Manager.
Mayor, I do have a couple of updates, since the last time this was brought before you.
Okay.
On page 208 and 209 are the two concept plans, page 209 is the original concept plan that was submitted to us, consistent with the requested zoning of R3, the high-density. If you recall, the staff had recommended not approving that rezoning. Our staff report has not changed, but since that date, the applicant did submit to us a new concept plan, which you see on page 208, consistent with the R2, medium-density, multifamily zoning district, which is consistent with the medium-density land use category that they are requesting. And on the report to council on the cover sheet there of your agenda, we did find that this particular concept plan is consistent with the zoning and with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Honeycutt?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. First, I'll just briefly tell you how we got here. My clients in around 2007 or '08 had this piece of property, and they wanted to develop for a single-family, and so we prepared engineering plans for them, they were approved, and they constructed the road, and then around 2009 or '10, the economy for residential units was gone, and so they, they never planted it, and so now there's a road there, and the water and the sewer and the storm drain is there, and the stormwater management has been there. And so due to that, and some health issues, they just continued to hold it, and so about a year or so ago, they decided they would like to redevelop it. They found a town home unit they really liked, and so they decided they wanted to develop in town homes. The main reason was they felt like that that was a more affordable, single-family purchase for, for people, and that detached, single-family had gotten too expensive, and they felt like that fit better. And so we moved forward, the town home they found, they really liked, was 20 feet wide, so we submitted for medium-density, that's all they wanted, and R3, which allowed the 20-foot-wide lot. Somewhere along the line, I think after the P&amp;Z meeting, staff alerted us about the compatibility code, which said that medium-density residential and R3 zoning was not compatible. And so Planning and Zoning denied the request, we, we changed our plan, and now, instead of the 43 units, as was mentioned, we are proposing 32 units, and, and an R2 instead of R3, which is compatible with the medium-density residential. And some other things we've done is, on the north boundary line is adjacent to a single-family home, and so there are only duplexes there, and the duplexes are about the size of a single-family resident, so it's more like it's a single-family area if you're looking from there. And so there are actually only the same number of units that back right up to that as there was in the plat, the preliminary plat for their single-family subdivision. And so on the east side, where it backs up to single-family, there's one unit of three or four, one building of three or four units in the northeast corner, none additional on the east side, and then on the south side, we have the larger structures, which are allowed to have six units in one building per Titusville code, and that is buffered by the stormwater system and Day Street. So that's how we got there, to try to make it more compatible, we felt like. And so with 32 units, that's about 5.6 or 5.7 units per acre, so it's not a lot more than the low-density residential. We feel this fits in the neighborhood, Planning and Zoning now feels like is compatible, and so therefore, they recommended approval. I think the Comprehensive Plan Amendment was one person against it, and it was unanimous for the rezoning, since it matched. So with that, I would ask you to approve this, as we have it, I think we're trying to do our best to make this thing work, and I'll be glad to try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Council? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk, are there any cards?
Ken and Carleen Miller.
I'm Ken Miller, Carleen Miller of Titusville, and we are for this project, we are the owners of this project, in fact, and we are very thankful to the P&amp;Z committee for their endorsing us, and giving us their almost unanimous approval, and forwarding this thing before the full council tonight. I also, we are also thankful to Mr. Honeycutt for his consistency, his hard work, and, you know, dedication, his professionalism, in helping us with this small project, there are bigger things around town that he could get himself involved in, and night after night he's here representing us, we do really appreciate it. We also appreciate those members of the public behind us here, who have been here time and time again, to, even those who oppose us, from even their opposition, we have drawn strength from it, and we have reexamined our plans, and along the way, we have made amendments, adjustments, and we want to see Titusville remain a beautiful city, we love Titusville, and the things that concern them are also the things that concern us, and we are willing to work, and we have worked, have shown our willingness, we will continue to work with our community to make this a real beautiful, continue to be a real beautiful and nice place to live. We have been here for 24 years, and we love it, love Titusville, and we're not going anywhere. Also, the staff, they have been with us from the get-go, and they have made recommendations in our favor, and they have stood behind their recommendations over this past year, that we have been back and forth here, and the name of Christie, and I think Brad, those two names seem to come up time and time again, I want to thank them for their dedicated service towards us, to help us in this project. Also, Mayor, you met with us, I guess, a few weeks ago, and that was an encouraging moment for us, we drew strength from it, we did not hold you to any, we did not twist your arm or ask you for your vote or anything of that nature. Also, Vice Mayor has met with Rodney, as he had mentioned earlier on, and I, I was now a member of our party of that meeting, but I'm asking you now, at this meeting, of Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councils, counselors, for your vote this night, or a positive yes vote, to go ahead and bring this matter to, to advance it, it's not even concluded yet, because there are so many other stages to get before a building goes up, and before we can actually sell a single unit or a property, right? So tonight, we are asking for your unanimous... So, tonight, we are asking for your unanimous consent, a yes vote, and we are also asking those who have opposed us in the previous meetings that they would reconsider. And there might be someone who are coming up, or others are coming up to speak against it, are asking for your support to join us in this project, and, you know, we have listened to you, and we'll continue to listen, and we'll incorporate in whatever we do from here onwards, we'll incorporate what we, the input that you have put in there. We are not against each other, we are not against anybody, there's no grudge or hold against anyone. We are loving people, we are peace-loving people, we want to see Titusville grow, we want to see everybody happy, everybody remain happy in this town, and, you know, there's no grudge or malice against anyone. After this is over and done, I would love to shake hands with anybody who wants to shake hands with me, right? It's our city, it's our town. Great Titusville. God bless Titusville, God bless you all.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would just say, it's a slippery slope when we start meeting with applicants, when we take money for our campaigns from Mr. Honeycutt. Mr. Honeycutt, why didn't you ask to meet with me? Why did you choose those two? Because you didn't give to my campaign, is that right? You don't have that access. And so, that is extremely frustrating, you guys, when you take money from these applicants, you're opening the door to have these meetings, and that is not fair to our citizens. It does not create an environment where there is a, I believe, a just hearing at this point.
Vice Mayor Cole?
I feel that I have worked with any citizen that has called me or asked me for help, whether they donated to my campaign or not. I think it's an affront for you, Member Moscoso, to accuse members of council from obtaining money for a campaign, which you can't run a campaign if you don't have money, that we give them access and we don't give anyone access. And I do give, anyone that calls me or anyone that asks me anything, I give them access. And I take, I really, that hurts me to hear you say that.
Member Stokel?
Yeah, I'm kind of offended by that comment as well. I did receive money from Mr. Honeycutt, and I did not meet with him. I think that we're all professionals up here, and I think that we need to make decisions that are ethical for us, because I think we could all look at everybody's campaign report and argue the same, like, who donated to your campaign? Are you speaking on their behalf? So, I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's right. There's been, if anyone looks at my voting record for the past eight years, I think you can see, I can't be bought, and that's very evident. So, I don't like the accusations or the assumptions like that. If you have a concern, a legitimate concern about, that you do think somebody's influence, share that, but I think just like planting seeds of doubt with no evidence causes a lot of discourse among us, and I just don't like it.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
I have to say, Megan and I agree with, you can't run a campaign without money. Oh, excuse me. You can't run a campaign without money. First campaign I ran, you wouldn't believe the number of $20 contributions I got from all sorts of people. And today, I mean, well, last couple of campaigns, it was people from the right, people from the left. Obviously, I'm out in the public all the time, people talk to me all the time, there's no, you're paying for access. Yeah?
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso, before I call on you, this conversation has derailed. I want us to stay.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. This conversation has derailed. We are here to conduct a public hearing on Royal Manor Townhomes. So, unless you have specific concerns about this, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'd like to address.
No, I would like you to address Royal Manor Townhomes.
No, they addressed something I'd like to address back to them. This is not, I'm not trying to offend you guys, I'm just saying, hey, you can run a campaign with no money. I've done it. But I'm just saying, the optics don't look good to the public. I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, it doesn't look good to the public, and I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't have called it out this way, but when you're sitting down there, I've sat down there for two years, and you're a citizen, and you are wanting to have a fair chance, and you know the applicant has given money, and the applicant has met with people, it makes it really hard. And so, I'm just asking you, I'm sorry if that came off offensive, but I'm just asking you, please look at it from the other side. Look at it from the other side, because this happens quite often, and I am not the only one in the room, I can guarantee, that has felt this way. So, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. City Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, sir. Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. I've been following this little 5.74-acre development from get-go, and it's really concerning to me, because the real problem is that this two-story townhome complex is not compatible with the comprehensive plan policy, 1.1.3. You can go back and forth with 20-foot, 23, 32, whatever, but the city, the comp plan says, "The city shall promote single-family development by restricting the proliferation of multifamily dwellings with neighborhoods, which have developed primarily with traditional, detached, low-density, single-family dwelling units on individual lots." Indeed, this property is surrounded by large, single-family lots of 2.27 acres, 1.91 acres, and .48 acres. So, I think we need to follow the comprehensive plan. No substantial changes have occurred in this area since the original zoning. The density or intensity of the proposed rezoning and use is not consistent with the development in this area. There are no substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in the existing zoning district, which would allow a maximum of 28 single-family residences. Retain the existing, single-family zoning as to be consistent with the comp plan and the development in the area. Please deny this SSA application and rezoning. Let's adhere to the comprehensive plan policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. City Clerk?
Vicki Conklin.
Vicki Conklin, 2920 Royal Oak Drive, Titusville, Florida. So, the question I ask is, it seems that I hear from staff that this is consistent with the comp plan and consistent with land use, but I would ask you, 24 feet for the lot width in front, how many properties around there are 24 feet wide? I dare to say, zero. How many other properties around there are two-story? I dare to say, zero. And so, it seems to be, it's not as our obligation as the city to change our comp plan, to change our future land use, to change it all around, just because a landowner wants to make more money. We need to be consistent with the comp plan, and we need to be consistent with the neighborhood that is surrounding that area. I wouldn't want to live with a neighbor that has a 24-foot lot width, that's not compatible. These are single-family homes that this surrounds. This is, this is really not compatible at all.
Thank you. City Clerk?
James Troutman.
James Troutman, 1705 Barna Avenue. My address is the property that does reside north of the property that is at question right now. I do want to commend Mr. Honeycutt for as much effort that he has put into this project, going back and forth, community engagements, planning and zoning. They have done, you know, they have brought it down, 28 to 32, you know, difference of, what is it, four properties, I guess, is what they're asking. That's the difference, really, is four properties here, is what it comes down to. The medium-density, I can see how that fits in the neighborhood, there are streets nearby that have medium-density. My only take on it would that be that single-family is the consistent area or consistent style of home that's there. This can still be a townhouse community. The last P&amp;Z that they were able to attend, the owner did state that these will be single-family homes. So, I guess my draw, my take back is why the medium dense, or medium, multifamily. I understand the medium-density. I'm curious about the multifamily that they're still asking for. The area is single-family. I would say that that would be more consistent with the neighborhood if we approve a single-family, multi-density property, is, you know, I don't think that that changes their square-footage requirements in what they're doing, and that would be my only take on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troutman. City Clerk?
The last card is Dan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, 860 Point Setta Avenue. I'm a registered professional engineer. I'm a land surveyor with a license that is on, I can't remember what it's called, it's not active, license is not active. And first of all, I want to ask is, this is several, I don't know, is this several votes, do I get more than three minutes on different, is this one time?
One three-minute.
Correct, this is one public hearing on both the land use and the zoning, so if you have comments on the land use and zoning, you would make them now, but then we will vote separately on each item.
Okay, and you're going to have two votes on, and it's going to have three, only going to have three minutes on the two different votes.
Right, it's one small-scale amendment that includes a land use and a rezoning ordinance, and we'll vote on each ordinance separately.
Well, I don't know if, that's not going to be, because first of all, I want to, I want to be recognized as an expert witness on this. And so, I don't know how far I'm going to get, but I'm not opposing this, but as far as an expert witness, I told you, I'm a professional engineer, and I've been a registered engineer on projects in which I have, for example, there was at Walgreens there on Harrison and Barna, it's not there, it was at First Florida Bank there. I want you to know that I did the engineer record on that project. I did the survey for that. I did the stakeout. I did the as-built. I know of no other person in Brevard County that is able to do that. Don't know any, there used to be some. I don't know, Honeycutt can't do it, he doesn't have somebody that has, he's double-licensed and actually does it. So, I have been disrespected repeatedly, just for example, like the sewage issue and other things, so I want to be recognized as an expert witness. That's the first thing I want, I want it to happen. I've been, I've been hired by the city for those two, for those two licenses. Do I have recognition as an expert witness for this project? Hello, anybody home? I'm a professional engineer, and I've done this, for example, I've shown you, for this, for this is an example, I showed you 40, over 40 red lines on this project. I reviewed Mr. Honeycutt's projects when I worked for the county. When I was finished reviewing it, do you know how many red lines it had on it? Zero, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Well, no, thank you, I didn't, I didn't get, I think I should be recognized, I have been recognized before. No, thank you.
City Clerk?
No more cards.
All right. Counsel, can I have a motion?
Well, applicant is entitled to rebuttal. Oh, sorry.
I just want to say one thing, and that is, I've never asked anybody to vote for me just because I contributed to them. And number two, I'm sorry, Mayor, and Conklin, I didn't contribute to either one of you, I contributed to Mr. Robinson, that was my candidate, I just pick whoever I think, and I meet with them, you know, to just let them know I support them, and so, I don't expect you to vote for me because I can, you know, I contribute to, and I don't contribute large amounts anyway, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. All righty, at this time, seeing no other discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing. Member Nelson?
I am familiar with the area, and there, because a friend of mine years ago lived over there, and there are townhomes around the corner from that area, so I'm okay with this as an R2. So, I would move to approve SSA 8-2024 Royal Manor Townhomes to approve the small-scale comp plan amendment land use.
We would need to handle, first, ordinance number 2, 2025, which is a land use ordinance first.
Ordinance number 2-2025, amending the code of ordinances which adopted the comp plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located in northwest corner of the intersection of Barna and Day Street from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And that would be based on staff report and testimony.
Thank you, Member Nelson, I have a motion, and I have a second from Vice Mayor Cole. Any further counsel discussion before we call the roll? Member Moscoso, did you have some?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just, I didn't know if you were getting ready to vote or ready to chime in for discussion. All right, with that being said, City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much, and that moves us on to the zoning. Are you ready to make a motion?
I could do, I can do it. I'm back to where I should be. Move to approve SSA 8-2024 Royal Manor Townhomes, approving the rezoning from single-family medium-density to multifamily medium-density. Second.
And that is ordinance number three, 2025.
Discussion.
Three-2025.
Is that based upon staff's report and testimony?
Based on staff analysis, information, and evidence presented.
All right, so I have a motion, and I have a second. Member Moscoso?
I just want to clarify, we're going from R1 to R2, not R1 to R3, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, City Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much. City Manager?
On to 9B, which is Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment 11, 2024, for a property located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard. This contains two ordinances, ordinance number 10-2025, and ordinance number 11, 2025, and the city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number 10, 2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on 3.14 plus minus acres of land located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard from low-density residential to commercial high-intensity, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 11, 2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number five, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on 3.14 plus minus acres of land located at 2960 Columbia Boulevard from the single-family medium-density R1B zoning district to community commercial CC zoning district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant has requested a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to provide a consistent commercial zoning district based on the existing and anticipated development patterns of the proposed area. The property is located on Columbia Boulevard between Cheney and Kirkwood Trail, generally located southeast of Walmart. The current low-density residential future land use designation, single-family medium-density R1B zoning district, do not permit commercial uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission con- The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this and approved it unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Dan Johnston.
Oh, applicant. Sometimes the applicant puts the card in, so that usually triggers.
Yeah, I didn't have a card from the applicant. I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Sean Abion. I'm with Florida Engineering Group, where the civil engineers representing the owner. Your staff has done a great job with their report. It's a detailed report, so I don't want to go over what they have said, but we concur with their recommendations. And basically, we're asking to change the land use from low-density residential to commercial high-intensity. And basically, we are consistent and compatible with your comp plan, with this request. We are on a major arterial. There are commercials next to us. There is a high-intensity, commercial high-intensity land use adjacent to us, to the south. So we are consistent. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to approve our request. I'm here mainly for any questions that you may have, and I ask that you give me some time for rebuttal if I need to come back and answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. City Council, do you have any questions?
Sir, did you, did you fill out a card?
I did not fill out a card.
If you would fill one out, please, and provide it to the clerk.
Sure.
Thank you. See, that's why I call the card, because they, you know, they talk, so I got to have a card. All right. City Clerk, any other cards? Mr. Johnson?
The only other card is Mr. Johnston.
Yeah. Mr. Johnston, just to remind you, we're talking about this second reading for high-intensity commercial on Cheney Highway.
Only three minutes, right?
That's right.
My name is Stan Johnston, 860 Point Setta Avenue. As before, I said, I'm a registered engineer and a surveyor with inactive license at this time. And first of all, I want to recognize myself as a, to you, as a professional engineer and an expert witness. I've, I have been an expert witness at court and at other meetings with, like St. John's River Water Management District, FDEP, and so forth. I've also, when I submitted to you, information about choosing me for TEC or P and Z is information that my references included Richard Potapka, who was the city engineer in Titusville, and also includes Scott, Scott, whatever that guy's name was, was, was the city clerk, the county clerk, Scott Ellis.
Mr. Johnson, we are very well aware of your qualifications. I would just like to ask you what your thoughts were on this amendment to the comp plan.
Okay. Can we stop the clock when you speak?
No, I'm just trying to help you, you know, convey us, to us, what you want to say.
Okay. Well, the last time you spoke, I answered questions, and my time was up. So I don't get extra time to speak. What I'm, and first of all, I'm trying to justify to you is that indeed, I am a professional engineer, especially because I'm so ignored. For example, I call city, the city manager, and he doesn't respond to my calls. And I call, and I contact him, many times I contacted council members, nobody responds to call, including Mr. Cole. I've called him many times. He doesn't respond.
You haven't called me, Stan.
Oh, yes, I've called you from, from the office downstairs.
Vice Mayor.
Many times. And so, so maybe their secretary needs to pass on the messages, because they're not messages, they're not getting there. But I mean, week at a time, seven days in a row, another seven days in a row, my, my calls are not recalled. Nobody, no council member returns my calls. So I don't get any respect on that issue. So anyhow, on this particular one, I don't think, believe I have time in my three minutes to express what I would like to say about this. But I was going to say is, is that I do not have objections to this. I'm going to, I was going to explain to you again is that why I should be respected, which I'm disrespected, for example, completely. And I know I'm disrespectful, too. But I've got, I've got rights to do it, because this, the city of Titusville is.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Is corrupt. Thank you. And dishonor.
City Clerk, any other cards? All right. This time, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 10-2025.
I just want to make sure if there's any rebuttal.
Rebuttal.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 10-2025, future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial high-intensity.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from counsel? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Muscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
And move to approve ordinance number 11-2025, rezoning property from single-family medium-density to community-commercial zoning.
Is that?
No, it's based on staff analysis and testimony.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from counsel? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Muscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I, I think, you know, some people think I have the hard job of running the meetings, but I think you making those motions is probably the toughest job.
That last one, I really screwed up.
That's why I like to do it. She does a good job. Thank you very much, Member Nelson. City Manager?
On to ordinances, first reading. This is item 10A, which is the re, conduct the first hearing of ordinance number 12, 2025 for a rezone application, number 1-2025, Windover Farms slash Cheney Highway. The recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission was denial. The vote was four yes, one no. This is your first reading, and public hearing is scheduled for your regular city council meeting on April 8, 2025, at 6:30.
Ordinance number 12, 2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993 of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by removing all previous conditions of approval originally applied by ordinance number 27, 2008, and ordinance number 29, 2008, for 25.9-acre property within the regional commercial RC zoning district located at 8225 Windover Way with Brevard County parcel ID number 223530AV65, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. Any cards? City Clerk?
Yes, Cole Oliver. And I believe he's the applicant, correct? You guys got applicant card?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Good evening, Cole Oliver. I'm here as the applicant, really here as its first reading to answer any questions that you guys might have for me tonight. If you'd like me to speak further on the project at this time, or, you know, the rezoning request, I'm happy to. But as its first reading, you know, I don't want to belabor the issue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. City Council? Seeing none, City Clerk, any other cards?
Yes, sir. Christine Boland.
Christine Boland, 2755 Armadillo Trail. The Windover Farms community has consistently participated in public hearings with development plans that affect development, density, traffic, noise, public safety, quality of life of our residents, or our community's character. We have strenuously objected to access for high-intensity commercial or high-density residential land use and zoning changes or development access to be located on Windover Way, a local roadway adjacent to the subject property, which is the sole ingress and egress road serving over 600 single-family homes. Based upon the planning department staff report, the applicant, Windover Farms, Inc., Jim Swan, is requesting the removal of the existing binding development plan for his property while the existing regional commercial zoning district will remain. Because the applicant is only one of the two property owners covered by the existing binding development plan, this raises procedural questions that were not addressed in the staff report that need resolution. The BDP the applicant is requesting to be removed applies to both the applicant's 25.9-acre property and a 6.94-acre parcel, the RC portion owned by George, that adjoins this applicant's property to the north. How can a BDP be removed from only one of the two properties since it was developed for a joint development plan? Can a BDP be removed from one property owner but not the other? Can one property owner request an action that affects another property owner without their stated consent or support? Assuming the procedural questions raised above can be resolved, we do not object to the removal of the BDP. And the landowners being able to develop their properties consistent with their existing land use and zoning when in full compliance with the city of Titusville Comprehensive Plan and LDRs, particularly those provisions that require citing location and access for high-intensity commercial development like RC or high-density residential development along arterial or collector roadways. We agree the property owner has access onto the arterial road, State Road 50, and should use that access point consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan and LDRs. However, we object to the planning department staff report assertion that access from a RC-zoned high-intensity commercial property could also be permitted onto Windover Way, a local road that has a limited right-of-way width of 50 feet and no ability for expansion. And I see I'm going to be cut off soon. So we're, we're neither for it or against it. We just don't want the city to be in noncompliance, and then, you know, they can apply for a variance and build whatever they want.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Lindsay Grizzle.
Hello, Lindsay Grizzle, 2605 Gator Trail. Very interesting piece of property. We're here again to talk about this, and it's coming before you again. It preceded your, your seat, but I'm sure you've been filled in on some of the, the details. We, we checked off the neither box as for for it or against it, because the property being combined with the other piece of property, you know, what does that do to the land developer's ability to develop it? The planning and zoning team, though, they brought up a lot of good concerns about separating the parcels and the, the piece of property's ability to function as a regional commercial piece of property without having to apply to, for a variance, and then we opened up the door for the access issues. So let me, okay. All right. So the staff report is what we had a challenge with. The staff report continues to try to push the functional use narrative, which is not really policy, policy-based, and is encouraging continued development actions in violation of the Comprehensive Plan and LDR. There's nothing in the city's adopted policy that allows for in any way supporting high-intensity commercial or high intensity, high-density residential zoning and diverting the associated traffic onto a local road. These are important and well-supported reasons why the Comprehensive Plan and the LDRs policies direct more intensive and commercial high-density residential away from the local roads and why existing roadway classifications and their underlying engineering right-of-way standards exist in the first place. There is, the Comprehensive Plan and the LDRs policies that we've referenced are good governance since that protected the residence, residential communities and local roads from the increased high-traffic impacts, including quality of life, from the number of high trips generated from the new intensity commercial and high-density residential development, and is a sound approach for good public policy to direct high-intensity commercial development onto larger roads with wider road width and to accommodate turn lanes and protect the traffic flow. Staff comments in the reports appear to be encouraging that noncompliance with these policies and pushing for a more intensive traffic onto our smaller roads from this new, from a potential high-density commercial development without first redeveloping the roadways or the segments so that it meets the policy for the definition of a collector or arterial road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Sandra Klinger.
Sandra Klinger, 2680 Bobcat Trail, Titusville. You should have been provided a copy of a letter and an addendum via email that we submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the March 19 meeting. After substantially affected members of the Windover Farms community received notice of this proposed rezoning application on its face, we additionally did not object to the applicant's request to remove the binding development plan so long as its removal does not create or cause a violation of the city's Comprehensive Plan policies or land development regulations or cause the necessity of a variance to those laws. A particular concern for our community is circumcision, circumvention of requirements that high-density commercial and high, I'm sorry, high-intensity commercial and high-density residential be located on collector or arterial roadways and result in access being diverted onto Windover Way, a local road, as well as assorted traffic and related impacts. As stated in the planning department staff report, the applicant's existing concept plan proposed a unified commercial and retail strip center with the, with the applicant's property and the neighbor, the neighboring property to the north, which is 6.94 acres of regional commercial, that provides the required frontage on State Road 50 for regional commercial development. These were presented in 2008, at the time the BDP was put on the property and the zoning was applied. Removing the linkage creates several fact-based procedural questions and policy noncompliance problems under the LDR requirements for regional commercial zoning. And the lot width requirements and location and proximity to a collector road intersection. Planning and Zoning Commission discussed these in detail, questioned staff, but the created policy noncompliance issues remained. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to deny the request with all but one member who voted for, who said he voted for because he didn't understand what was going on. He didn't understand the issues involved. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we've done additional research, and we'll be providing a final comment letter for the record with attached fact-based evidence based on information provided in the agenda package, public records, and the record created during the Planning and Zoning Commission before the final hearing on the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, any other cards?
The last card is Dan Johnston.
Mr. Johnson?
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, 860 Point Setta Avenue. I'd like to comment on what Sandra Klinger has to say. She does a good job. I think you should listen to her. She's got a lot of sense. And I'm going to pass on that, but just, I want to just add that. She's, she's doing very well in the number of presentations she's made. I want you to listen to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, I believe as the applicant, I get a brief chance for rebuttal. Not going to belabor the point tonight again, but I would like to address the one issue that was brought up regarding the site plan. There is no binding development plan. What Titusville has is an ordinance that says if a concept site plan is shown at a hearing, that site plan becomes adopted along with the site. So, and I believe we can check with staff, but there was no zoning application for Mr. Johnson's, or the property to the north of us is six acres when it came in. So there would be no ability to bind his property with a site plan was, that was shown at that time. So we're only talking about the site plan as it applies to this property. Otherwise, you could have someone show a site plan at a hearing and bind someone else's property that's not even applying for anything at the time. So, you know, just addressing that one point, we're not addressing the north, Mr. Donnell's property at all at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Member Stokel?
Yes. I just wanted to check, I don't know, City Attorney, if you
Yes, I just wanted to check, I don't know, City Attorney, if you have any information on that or can speak to that from a legal standpoint?
I cannot speak to the facts of the property, who owns the property, who owned it at the time. I would not know that. I can speak to the fact that if he did present a concept plan, it would be binding and at the hearing. And my understanding is that a concept plan was provided. If that concept plan covered more than the site, then to get his permits and build, he would have to build pursuant to that concept plan and obtain whatever approvals at that time he needed to do to get the permits, but it would be built consistent with that concept plan.
Are we, as a council, legally allowed to remove a concept plan if the other owner is not involved in it?
It's my understanding that the, from what I heard, and I'm just going to say based on what was stated, because I do not know.
Okay.
That the original owner may not have been part of the original application, so his property would not have been included in the rezoning for the concept plan, so it would not have been part of that. He already, probably already had whatever zoning he needed. But if the developer came in and said, "My concept is this, and I'm going to build per this concept plan," and it happened to cover another piece of property, well, he's going to have to find a way to do that.
Okay.
Or, because it was contingent on doing the plan he presented, it's whatever he needed to acquire to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. City Attorney, or sorry, City Manager?
On to new business. Item 12A, which is the FY 2024 City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency Annual Report. Staff's recommending that you approve the FY 2024 Annual Report for the City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency to meet the March 31 deadline. The financial audit information has been completed, and it will be added to the report and posted as required by the Florida statutes, and courtesy copies will be sent to the taxing authorities in the county.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards on this?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnson? We're talking about the CRA report.
Okay. My name is Stan Johnston. I'm a registered professional engineer, and I have come to you numerous times about this. Whoops, wrong sign. I'm sorry. It's the sewage sign. The thing is, the CRA has done horrible things. In other words, the CRA continues to approve the sewage spray on women, children, and babies. It's disgusting, it's horrible, it's against engineering laws, it's against my textbooks, it's against my training, it's against my teaching as, and when I taught college. It's against when I tell my employees and so forth when they deal with sewage. It's all against it. Yeah, that's it. Show it to them. Go the other way, other side. Yeah, that side. So, the thing is, is that this is horrible, what you're doing reporting. You should not omit this information. This is from me, professional engineer, that CRA is doing dirty work when you are not turning off those sewage fountains. You should be doing it. You've done it for three years straight. You are completely fruitcakes and nuts on this. You have no business doing this. I can't believe you're doing it. Fruitcakes and crackpots. That's what you guys are. This is to not be omitted from the report. The report, I'm saying as a professional engineer, put this in your report. You've got somebody, a professional engineer, with 40,000 professional engineers who will not dispute him, and you won't hire one, and yet you continue to spray people with piss and poop. This is disgusting. It should be in your report. I want it in your report. I want you to say yes. If you don't say yes, I'll tell you what, you can have your professional engineer dispute it because it's going to the board for more, it's going to the courts, too. I'm taking this to the courts, too. You should be doing what's right, you're doing what's wrong. You have no business doing this. I can't understand why you would do it. Why in the world would the City of Titusville approve spraying people with piss and poop? The only city in the world, only city in the world that does this. I don't know of anybody. And yet, what do I get from you? Silence. When I call your secretary and say, "Please have all these council members call me," nobody calls me. This is disgusting. I don't know what you guys are going to do, but you should tell the truth. The truth is, is you're breaking the law. The truth is, you're going against what professional engineers say. I'm a professional engineer. I even taught it. I taught seven different courses at BCC as a head of civil engineering technology. I've worked on septic treatment plants, I've worked with septic, I've worked with van holds, I've designed them. I worked into the design of sewage treatment plants, and you won't listen to me. You won't listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, are there any other cards?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve the fiscal year 2024 Annual Report for the City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Onto 12B. The City Council inquired whether it would be possible for the decisions of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals to be appealed to the City Council before ultimately filing an appeal in Circuit Court. The City Charter currently provides for the creation of a board and adjustment, but it also states that the council may act as the Board of Adjustments if they so desire and may at any time by ordinance abolish the board, and the City Council shall act as the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And staff is recommending to council to provide direction on which way you'd like to go with this one.
Thank you, City Manager. Member Stokoe, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, I brought this up at our last meeting, and I appreciate staff bringing it back so quickly. Just to reiterate, I think that it would be wise of us to have the ability for potential applicants to appeal to City Council based on whatever may happen at our BAA. As stated earlier, all of our boards, except for this one, acted as an advisory to us. This one was the only one that there was no potential other options for anybody to appeal to us if denied potentially at BAA. So, I think this would be a great move for us in case we need to use it.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Member Nelson?
Okay. I wasn't real happy with the ordinance. One, I think we, while we're doing it, I think we ought to go ahead and come up with a definition for standing. What does standing mean? What do they have to show to have a voice in this? Because it is legal definition. I was also concerned because you're talking about doing a de novo hearing, and to me, if I'm doing, that means basically we start from scratch. If it's in appellate court, you know, appellate court looks at the record, they look at a brief from each side and make a decision. They debate it, make a decision. But here, we're going back to ground zero, listening to all the citizens, listening to all the evidence over again. And if we're doing that, why do we have a Board of Adjustments and Appeals? Because we're basically redoing the work. So, my thought is, if we're going to do this, then, one, let's do it sort of as if we were in appellate court, looking at a decision that was made, and going from there. Does that make sense, Richard?
Well, of course, you'd have to have the entire record before you.
Which is a reason.
Based on that, you wouldn't be taking testimony, you would just be looking.
At the record.
Placing your judgment for them, and what would that review be based upon? Right. As you said before, if it came to you de novo, which would mean new, you know.
Yeah.
You would hear it as if you were BAA at that point, and you would hear all the testimony. You would hear all the evidence, and you would apply the criteria that the BAA would have applied. You would be acting as, right, under an appeal.
My thought would be, you take that criteria that BAA uses, and you say, "They," just like a court, "we believe that this criteria was met or wasn't met," and we would go from there, as opposed to doing it totally all over again, which would be a good reason to, to be honest with you, to video the BAA meetings, because then we would have that record in front of us, we would have transcript, we would have a video record.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I do agree with having those recorded. There was one last night, and I wasn't able to attend, but I think it would have been very helpful. I will say, I understand what you're saying. I do think, and I might have my dates wrong, but in the past 20 or so years, we've only had one appeal to the board, so it's not that common. However, I mean, if people know that's the process, that could up it. But just looking at the history, there's only been one appeal. I personally really like this idea that we would have any appeals come to us, but I also, I understand what you're saying.
Member Stokoe?
Yes, just to, Member Nelson, when you said you're not crazy about the ordinance, were you talking about, so that we had some examples in our packet? Were you talking about the examples that, were there specific ones that you didn't like? Because for me, what I was thinking, and I hear your point, it would be up to us to decide, do we want to accept the appeal and to rehear it if we think it warrants it? And then if we do, yes, then we would be subject to all of that. But if we don't, if we, I think it's an added protection if we feel that we need to use it, not to say that we need to use it. So, I think that would be at our discretion, just like they asked for a rehearing yesterday at BAA. They could have said, "No, we don't want to hear it," and it would have been, same thing with us. They could appeal to us, and we could say, "Yes, we will hear it," or, "No, we think that BAA made it right, and we will not hear it." I think it gives us that discretion, so to your point, we won't be having to go through a bunch of public comment all the time, potentially if a lot of appeals happen.
Because if we're watching a video of BAA.
Exactly. We can, yes.
Yeah. I like that idea, and I'm just saying that I think it needs to be laid out more completely. I think, I think there needs to be some legal definitions in it. There needs to be, you know, this is how we're, this is procedure.
Yeah.
It's going to come to us, we're going to review the record and make a decision on whether or not we're going to hear it. And then, do we hear it from scratch, or do we hear it based on the record?
I do have some concerns with the approach of deciding whether you want to hear it or not, because what's the criteria? I don't want to be arbitrary. What would be the basis of your decision to hear it or not hear it? Some members might have watched it, some may not have watched it. You all may not have the same level of knowledge of the case based on that. So, I think if this council wants to entertain appeals, I think whoever is interested in appealing would have the right to file that appeal, pay whatever fee you associate it, and have their appeal before you. Not, you know, "I'll pay the fee and we'll put the appeal out there, and then you tell me you're not going to hear me." I think if it's going to be an appeal, it ought to be an appeal. I think council, if you're going to set this process up, would hear that appeal. As opposed to, "I file it, I come in, and I'm hoping you hear it," because then what would be the basis for not hearing it? Because you're not, you haven't taken any testimony. So...
I think, stop me if I'm wrong, but I think we say, "We're either hearing it or we're not hearing it, but we're hearing it based on we think that BAA didn't give credence to this particular criteria. This criteria was not met."
I think that would be the basis whether to uphold a decision or not uphold a decision based on whether you think they applied the correct law.
So, maybe we're saying...
That's why I think they do, a lot of them do the de novo, because, okay, they went to BAA, they, for some reason, they didn't agree with the decision, so now is council going to now apply the criteria and the evidence? Or are you strictly looking at the record period of what happened below?
See, to me, I would rather look at what happened below and make that decision.
And that'll require, of course, court reporter, transcripts. How are you going to get that?
Wait a minute. Do we have to do transcripts, or can we do the video?
Well, I don't know how each member, whether they watched the video or didn't watch the video, and what you're basing your decision on.
We have them.
Based on the record, because an appeal from you then would go to Circuit Court, and that's going to review your record, not the previous record.
Hmm. I don't really like the video thing either, because that doesn't give us the ability to potentially ask questions, or if something was missed, we have no opportunity to kind of ask those questions or engage. I hear what you're saying, and I feel like you're, I think you're thinking that we're going to have an abundance of appeals all of a sudden come through, and I don't think that will happen. And I feel like if that were to happen, we could revisit again and maybe change our If you watch the BAA, it's typically some variances, it's different things, and they normally get resolved. I mean, that's probably one of the boards that we don't really hear much on. So, I think that it's nice to have this in place should it be needed, should there be decisions made that we, as a council, may not necessarily agree with. Again, I don't think it will be this abundance of appeals and abundance of individuals, but I feel like this is something that we should do for our citizens.
Thank you, Member Stokoe and Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
I am, hmm, I'm torn on this one, because as Member Moscoso said, we've only had one appeal in 20 years. I'm not, I would like to know how many cities, surrounding cities, what other cities within Brevard County or within the state, to get a number of how many other cities of our size hear our appeals from the Boards of Adjustments.
There's three in our packet from our county.
Yeah.
That are in there. Cocoa, Cape Canaveral, West Melbourne, yes, so this does happen.
It just, just from listening to attorneys speak, you know, it sounds like it really, would we be like an appeals court? Like, Member Nelson said, if it comes to us, we review it, and we have an opportunity not to look at it, or we have to look at it? I think it's, it could become very convoluted.
Yeah.
You would be sitting as an appellate court. There are two different types of appeals that go to an appellate court. It could be de novo, or they could just be looking at the record for error. De novo means you present the case new, to you. So, you're sitting as an appeal court, but you're not looking at it to see whether the board beneath you made error or did it wrong, and you're going to send it back to them because they did something wrong. You're going to listen to all the testimony if you do it de novo. You're going to apply the criteria to the evidence before you, and you will be acting as the board. And then, an appeal of your decision then would go to Circuit Court, and then they would look at your decision based on the evidence provided, whether you followed the law.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole and City Attorney. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would just say, I think, yeah, we've only had one in 20 years, and I don't think it's going to be common that we have a lot related to development, because typically that does come before us, and that's when we typically get a lot of people who have public comment. Like, the other things on the agenda last night were AstroTurf, and that was a pretty easy one because it's in our ordinance, so there was nobody there to speak on it. I mean, those meetings are typically 30, if even 30 minutes, and so I understand that there's, that there could be things, but maybe it's something we could review again later on and see if it becomes out of hand or whatever, but I think as elected officials, it's nice to have oversight of that board if there is something that maybe we see that we would think that maybe it violated some other regulations or plans that we have in the mix.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. City Clerk, are there any cards on this?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? You're up.
I might know something that you guys don't know. Here's what's going on. I want you to listen to this, is that... Is that about three years ago, the city of Titusville changed its review of waivers and variances. Does anybody know about that? It's something new. It has, for example, it has two things happening. Peggy Bisaka is able to grant waivers, variances, or whatever like that, without even going through anybody else. Number two, you have something new. You have the DRC. What does the DRC do? You saw that red line drawing there that I had? We had over 40, 40 red lines? The DRC and Peggy Bisaka, they, they said, well, the road, Mockingbird Lane, counts as a buffer. How can you have a road count as a buffer?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I'm not sure what you're talking about talks to anything about what we are talking about.
You're talking about the way.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're not talking about whether the Board of Adjustments should come to us or not. You haven't said one word about Board of Adjustments.
I'm saying everything, what happened, that you should know.
I don't want to know what happened. I want you to talk about this particular item.
You're having this problem because of that decision that was made about three years ago. That's why it's happening. Peggy Bisaka should have never granted that, that way. It should have gone to the public also, and it was prevented by what I just told you. That is the whole subject. This is the problem. The problem just happened. It happened on this project, it happened on Apollo Gardens. It's not even going through the public. That's the problem, Mr. Cole. That's what I'm telling you. You're not, I don't, I think you should listen. Okay, don't listen. Just do what, do what you want your way. And maybe you'll have all kinds of problems happen. But Peggy Bisaka should have never been given that authority. Never. Never. I don't know of any other city that does it that way. There are probably some big cities that do it that way, just like that. You get waivers, you just. But the thing is, is she had no business doing it, and she made some big mistakes. Like, for example, she told us that she knew what to do with the golf course. She knew what to do because she has experience. That's what she told us, and look what happened to Royal Oak. That was, we were relying on her to take care of that, because she said she could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
One last card. It's Kathleen O'Rourke.
First of all, I want to say thank you for raising this. And we all know that we had a really bad experience with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and how things were managed. And I think part of the problem is it's inherently unfair to the citizens, because the reality is, anytime there's an illegal discussion, lawyers could argue either side, depending on who's paying the bill. But they have the money from the developer's side, and that's really unfair, because the citizens are trying to present and be heard. We are actually the ones that pay the salaries of people here and that do this. And, and that's why this went so badly, because we, we don't have the amount of money. And, and then having the next option, which exists, is, I understand it, is if you don't do this, we have to put $100,000 bond down to show that we will be happy to pay all the inflated loyal, legal costs of the, of the person who is doing this. And the citizens, again, just disrespected. And honestly, the issue of standing was bizarre, if you think about it, because all I could get from the, what the council presented was, nobody had standing, except for them. They had standing because this was their investment. But it was very strange. And, and the citizens need your help, and they need that protection, because this is serious. And, and also, the way the citizens were treated, particularly by the chair during that first meeting, sitting there eating potato chips or something as people come up and talk about their feelings, that was really disgusting. It, it was a terrible experience, and I think, hopefully, the time that his, um, the chairperson's appointment comes up, that it does not get renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, are there any other cards? Counsel, Member Stokoe?
Yes, my motion would be that we move ahead with drafting an ordinance to allow for this, similar to Cape Canaveral's wording on page 419.
I, I would second that, but I would like to add that we add some type of definition, legal definition of standing to that.
Okay.
And I have to say, of all the ordinances, Cape Canaveral seems to be the best.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second, and I have a Member Stokoe, who agreed to that friendly amendment. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion, Member Moscoso?
Do we, we don't have a legal definition of standing?
That, that was going to be one of my questions, based on this motion. What, because I think you're referencing the current ordinance that says an affected property owner can appeal. Well, we don't have a definition of an affected property owner. Whenever that was drafted, there was, there was not a definition.
So that's.
But this doesn't change that ordinance. This would be the appeal, which under this language would be any party aggrieved. So whoever was a party to that appeal who was unhappy, they automatically could appeal to you.
So I think then we should define a party aggrieved as standing. We should, we should insert that into there.
Right. In my opinion, i- if we write it the way it's written here?
No, no, no. We're just basically saying that this seems to be the most appropriate. Am I correct?
Yeah, I guess my motion was, yes, I thought Cape Canaveral's was the one that would be most appropriate, and then give direction to our legal staff to bring back, because we would have to vote on it. So look at that as an example, to draft what you feel is correct for us to discuss and vote on.
Right.
So the ability is for anybody who had filed an application and been, been heard by BAA would have the right to appeal?
Yes.
Right. But we're asking that, you know, say I live at Scottsmore, and I don't like something that happens in Titusville. I'm not going to say, I'm a party aggrieved, you know?
I would think it's an applicant. So whoever, whoever the applicant was at BAA would be the same one that would be able to appeal. I don't think it would be somebody different.
Agree, just by applicant.
It'd have to be an applicant or an aggrieved party at that level. So they first would have had to have been a party at BAA to be able to appeal to you.
Right.
Yes.
It wouldn't be someone able, a, a, a third party. Wanting to appeal to you, something that happened to BAA.
Okay.
No, because they would go to BAA first. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Is that what I'm understanding?
I think I'm okay.
Member Moscoso?
I swear to it, though.
What if BAA has denied to hear, like, that was the first ruling with Apollo Gardens? They did not hear it, and then they appealed it, and then it got heard. And so then, once it gets heard, then they don't, if they don't like the decision of the BAA, then they come to city council?
They would have the right to appeal to city council then, at that.
Okay, but you can't appeal if you don't get the, only if you get the right to be heard?
Well, no, it says a party aggrieved. So if, if BAA says they don't have standing, that's what they would appeal to us, is their standing.
Okay, so you can appeal the standing as well?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that you can appeal that.
I believe council wants to, the ability to hear any decision rendered by the BAA. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Any decision. It's decisions that are disapproved, that, that they don't approve.
I think that what's happening is, if BAA decides to not hear something, they have the right to appeal to us. If they do hear something and deny it, the person could still have the right to appeal. So in both situations, yes. Good?
Are you sure everybody's good? All right, so I have a motion to direct the city staff to formulate an ordinance or policy similar to Cape Canaveral with some of the recommendations that we had, and come back to us, say, a motion in a second. I don't think there's any cards on this. I already called the cards. So all those in favor, say aye, please. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right.
On to petitions and requests.
Our petitions and requests, non-agenda items and people who did not speak the first time around.
Good evening. Elizabeth Baker, 1805, Augustine, Titusville resident. Strange things are afoot in Titusville. So I was standing outside, talking to some folks, you know how people talk, chit chat, and somebody said to me, we think the city manager is being sued. So I looked it up, and it turns out that there's actually something to this. There's a gentleman named Brian Thomas that as of January 15th of 2025, Brian Thomas is the plaintiff, city of Titusville, Scott Larrice, city manager, as a defendant. This action is for damages exceeding the sum of $50,000. Who's Brian? Anybody? Does anybody know that the city manager is being sued, and the city of Titusville is being sued for discrimination? It's a disabled military veteran, if anybody cares about disabled military veterans. Anybody?
I do.
You do? You do? These people care about military veterans. And as a citizen of Titusville, a resident of Titusville, I live in this city. You guys represent me? Kinda. Well, you do. What the hell's going on? Why don't the people know about this? And for a city that does not want to get sued so bad, and was so adamant to deny our constitutional right to clean water based on that, you guys sure do get sued a lot. It's weird. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you speak at the first petitions and requests?
Oh, I did.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did.
Just being impartial. You can only speak at one. Uh, one's petitions and requests. You, she spoke at petitions and requests earlier. I mean, you, you spoke on an agenda topic. You can speak now.
Okay. We were, something was brought up, I don't know the date of that meeting, but Connie Milton had proposed that parties, that the public be able to put together kind of a synchronous type of presentation to present versus having the three-minute per citizen for one issue. So that's, we have a city, you know, a second reading coming around the corner, and so we just wanted to propose that be an option for us, to present a single unitive presentation instead of many, many three-minute cards from Wendover.
Thank you very much.
Can I say one, ask one more thing?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that Keep Brevard Beautiful Trash Bash is on April, is on April 5th, and I guess we did really good last year. And the team that is kind of like pushing this this year, we have nine teams in Titusville, which is the same as Melbourne has, scattered throughout. So you can just find it, Keep Brevard Beautiful Trash Bash, and I'm hosting a team. Christine and I are hosting a team on, at, that's the 5th, April 5th, in front of Target. So it'll be in front of Petco, handing out supplies. So hopefully, we, we win. It's a competition between the different cities of Brevard.
Thank you very much for sharing that information. I believe there is 11 sites in, in Titusville. I know there's nine teams, which hopefully we get a couple more teams to, to handle that. And I think it's exciting what John and Susan and all those guys are, are doing to, to make our community beautiful. And then to answer your question, I'm going to ask for council's approval at the next meeting where we could allow for folks to yield their time, but they'll have to sign something saying, I yield my time, and add that up. And, but then they can't speak on that, like, you know, they're yielding it to somebody else.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure. Yes, sir.
Good evening, city council members, and concerned members of the Titusville community. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Anthony Shuler. I was born and raised here in Titusville, Florida. I'm currently staying in Palm Bay right now. But what brought me here tonight is an issue that has been stirring in the last couple of, last couple of months, or a month, I would say. I believe this current climate of demand that is focused on the removal of the Titusville Police Chief, John Lau, I believe that it is a, the result of a coerced political entities that are coercing the black community specifically, and gaslighting them into demanding that Chief Lau be fired. Okay? I believe that these entities have pressured the local black community into demands that do not serve the best long-term interest. I request caution that we gatekeep, we, the black community, gatekeep our morally just social, political position, and consider the consequences that are being requested of the collective. I am not declaring that the emotions surrounding the climate be unjustified, or that their demand for justice is invalid. What I'm saying is that the community must be vigilant, more than any other community, from being used as a self-sacrificial pawn to serve political needs of a party or any entity that doesn't produce anything tangible in response. Our current environment is seeing civil rights protections removed. Vice Mayor Cole, I sat in a room with you a few years ago, and I warned the entire room. I don't know if you remember, of what would come of the political strategy to euphemistically deny the legitimacy to the black community's position by exploiting the terms DEI and woke. And look where we are now. Our legitimacy is now at risk of being collateral damage of the political battle between Mayor Connors and his former opposition candidate. There's a lot on the table, and I don't think that we're asking the right questions to get the results that we desire. I believe that demands for John Lau to step down are premature. I may not have all the information, so it would be extremely ignorant of me to assume that. Okay? But I do believe that we have an opportunity here to change that current narrative. I'd like for you, Mayor Connors, to assist in creating and fostering that opportunity by not simply staring at people when they ask you legitimate questions. You have the opportunity to help.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Anybody else for petitions and requests? Oh?
Hi, my name's Lilly. I work for the city. I'm the Sustainability Action, oh, sorry, sorry, Sustainability Planner. First time up here. It's kind of nerve-wracking, really. My heart's like racing. I wanted to just, because of the KBB announcement, also highlight that the city has launched a Sustainability Leaders Award. And this is a really good attempt to highlight all the work that the businesses, the people, citizens are doing. I want to encourage everyone watching to submit a nomination. We want to highlight all of them. It's on our website, on the, under Sustainability, and it's due tomorrow. I needed to add that, too.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lilly. Anybody else? Oh, I thought you were getting up. City Manager?
On to mayor and council reports.
All right, thank you very much. As you probably see from my calendar, I've been pretty busy. I went to Tallahassee. Learned a lot. That's for definite. For sure, learned a lot about how Tallahassee works. I'm excited to take some of this knowledge and have further discussions so that we can, as a council, put a plan together to really go after some legislative priorities for our city next year. And with that being said, Tourism Development Council, nothing to report. The TPO, I was not at. Member Moscoso filled in for me. Maybe she can speak in on that, or Vice Mayor Cole. Other than that, it's kind Um, other than that, it's kind of smooth sailing right now, um, in our community. So, I appreciate everybody being here and, uh, voicing, uh, their concerns, thoughts. Um, it is very much appreciated. Uh, with that being said, uh, we'll yield the floor to who wants to go next. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, the first thing I would like to do is to make a motion. And help me out a bit here, Richard. I want to make a motion to, for proclamation. April is, uh, Fair Housing Month and I would like to make a motion that we develop a proclamation for Mayor Connors to present to, in support of fair housing.
So do you want that presented at the city council meeting? Is that your, your desire?
Yes. Okay, that's my motion.
I have a motion. And what, what council meeting would you like that?
Uh, how's, if I make the motion today, can it be at the next council meeting?
Sure, if you, um, well, the next presentation meeting will be at the end of the month.
Okay.
We have CRA at the first of the month, so I would recommend that you, you do that at the second meeting in April.
Okay, thank you, yes. Okay, second meeting of April, yeah.
Do we need to have a recipient?
Uh, the, I've got a call that asked me to make this and the recipient would be, uh, I think it's the, I think it's Al Teala. Who's gonna put the proclamation together.
In Osceola County?
No. Bavard County. I mean, Titusville. This is strictly for Titusville.
Okay.
Mayor Connors would sign the proclamation.
Okay. So I would second it?
Okay.
So really the, the motion on the, the, the floor is presenting the proclamation at a council meeting.
Yes.
Um, so I got a motion, I got a second. And, um, any cards? Anybody have a opinion on that?
Stan Johnston.
I don't see him.
No, okay.
Oh, I guess he's back there. All right, any council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the second thing I have is that, uh, Councilmember Muscoso and I attended the TP, uh, Transportation Meeting. And it was, uh, disheartening. They, we, we did a, a team. Member Muscoso, Katie Delaney and I. The, they, the bus folks are putting together a, like a Lyft or an Uber to take people to the bus stops. They did a comprehensive survey. They put a map up on the screen and the map showed Bavard County with a line drawn right at Port St. John. They did not show Titusville, Scottsmore or Mims. I kind of went a little bit ballistic on the poor lady, but not only did I do it, Member Muscoso and Katie Delaney. And when I asked them why, they said, this is just a bloody initial survey and they didn't do the whole county. They had Vieira in there. How many people in Vieira do you think need a, a ride to the bus stop? So, I don't know if we made a difference or not, but I don't know, I think she felt like, I mean, why would you do a survey in Bavard County and let the line stop at Port St. John? That's ridiculous. Piggyback.
Vice Mayor, are you done with the rest of your report?
I would just say, I think you got influenced by Commissioner Delaney and I. And I've never seen you so lively and I liked it, so thank you. Thank you for standing up for Titusville, I appreciate it.
Uh, Muscoso?
Um, so I just have a few things. Um, I want to thank our Public Works, um, and for getting, we got some sidewalk, there were some sidewalks and fill and, um, it wasn't complete and I had a resident reach out to me and they went out there and did a fantastic job. The resident was just so happy about it and it was just an all-around great situation. I love when I feel like we can actually help. And it wasn't me, it was our staff that, that did the work. So I just want to congratulate, um, Chuck and Mike. Um, also, um, we had some issues with some, some of our parks. And so I did, if anybody wanted to know, when I was pulling the contract between Parks and Rec, I'm just curious to know, um, what that looks like. There's nothing nefarious behind it. I just don't know what that contract is. And I've had residents ask, okay, are you guys maintaining it? So I did reach out to Jeff Davis on two different accounts and he's done a great job of, um, getting those things fixed immediately. It's amazing. Um, then I also, we were up in Tallahassee and I, I just want to brag on, um, Member Stokol. She is in her element up there. Um, she really is, um, fighting for home role here against Live Local, against a few different things. And so I know, um, citizens don't often see it, but, um, she really is working hard for us. And then lastly, I do want to apologize, my words were harsh. And so, um, I think after going to Washington, after going to, um, the Capitol, I'm just disgusted by how things work. That's no excuse. Um, I just wish things didn't work that way with all the money and all the lobbyists involved. Um, but that doesn't equate to what's happening here. So I just want to apologize for that.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Member Nelson?
Um, I had no meetings this last couple of weeks, but I had a citizen reach out to me and send me a picture. So, when Sarah and Dan Diesel and I ran in twenty sixteen, our number one cons- well, our number one and number two concern was the Indian River and our infrastructure. So, this is a photo that I received. I'll send it out. And I don't know if you guys can see this. And maybe Mr. Johnson knows what these are.
I know the answer, but I don't want to answer.
I'm not sure I want it, I'm not sure I want to tell. I will say it is a citizen of Titusville. Um, I, I don't want anybody deciding we should have dinner, uh, on these. I'd rather see them grow. But, uh, this is something I haven't seen in my lifetime in Titusville. I was Laura Lee Thompson and she said, I've never seen it in Titusville. These are oysters growing. So, yeah, we hear about how horrible our river is and I guarantee if our river was seriously horrible, we have, well, it has been seriously horrible. And I bet you it's probably been a hundred years since we had oysters. And worst, nineteen ninety-four in, in that area. Um, we used to have redfish tournaments every year. And I own some property and I have a bait shop on it. And I stopped at the bait shop and was talking to the guy in there and he was like, I'm going fishing this afternoon. I said, what for? Redfish. And so he was saying, the redfish are back. So, this is about a lot of work. But I think, I don't know about Sarah, but I'm very proud of, of getting here. Because it was a lot of struggle. So with that being said, um, Marine Resources Council spoke to the chamber, I think, two weeks ago, talking about the river. And I'd love to see if we could have the same presentation. Um, so that would be my motion, is that we invite Marine Resources Council to come up and make the presentation.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson and I have a second from Vice Mayor Cole. Is there anybody that wants to, you want to say something about the Marine Resource Council?
Stan Johnston.
Jolene, thank you very much. Go forward.
I'll tell you where the oysters are.
Let me guess first, at intersection of State Route fifty?
No.
Okay, where is it?
South, south.
Okay.
Down by New York, New York.
Okay.
And I understand there are oysters all along that riverbank.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
I swore I wasn't gonna tell.
I have a.
I gave up too, I gave up too quickly.
Not a lot of arm twisting either.
So the other question?
I have a motion and I have a second.
Oh, sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, Member Nelson?
Second request, um, when I was looking at the, the plans for the, uh, commercial property on four oh five, North Columbia, uh, one of the things I noticed was you had five acres of wetland, but it was like two acres was on one piece of property. And then contiguous to it, there was three acres. So my question to Brad is if we have part of a wetland here and part of the wetland here adjacent to it, do we preserve that wetland?
I believe you're referring to the comprehensive plan policies about five acre, the five acre rule and, because anything less than five acres, the code allows us to go forward and allow someone to mitigate or take out portion of a, of a wetland. But over five acres is supposed to put into a conservation land use, protect it in some way. So is that what you're referring to, that protection?
Yeah, so if you got a piece of prop- two pieces of property, half the wetlands on one, half on the other, do you, do, are we still protecting it?
It depends. Depends on the functional value of that wetland. Um, each time these land use applications come before you, they are supposed to provide to you a, um, environmental study and a wetland delineation to demonstrate, uh, what that, where that wetland is and what the function is. Um, and through those land use decisions, you, you make that decision based on evidence that's given to you. Um, I can't say that there was a recent, a fairly recent application that was processed and approved by this council over on Helen Hauser with a similar question. And the property itself was three acres, but the majority of the property is wetlands. But it is, was adjacent to other wetlands off, off-site, adjacent to it.
Right.
So the question was, could they utilize that property because of the fact that there's a wetland next door that does come to acres of five acres or more? And that, the council at that time decided to allow that land use decision, a change to happen. And that property is being developed.
I think part of that was because the functionality of the wetland was really low.
That's possible, yes.
Um, so we would still look at the functionality of the wetland?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. And the third thing I want to say is somebody put on Facebook that one of my relatives was responsible for the sewer spell in Sandpoint Park. That person is an ex, ex-stepmother. She has not been part of my family in thirty years. So, I don't claim her. I'm not sure she claims me, but she is not part of my family.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Muscoso, do something else?
Yes, um, I was just informed that it's Stan's birthday. Can, I just would like to say, Stan, happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Stan.
Thank you, Mr. J.
Happy birthday. Now you're officially an old man. You're standing giant.
We actually, uh, call that old old. That's old old in the literature. You gotta get eighty-five plus to be oldest old. There's different definitions of old. All right. Yeah, so. All right, so, uh, Member Nelson went, Member Muscoso went, Vice Mayor Cole went. Bringing up the rear, Member Stokol?
Yes, um, I think I'm probably gonna wait till our next meeting to kind of dive into some of the legislative stuff as we know more. But just to touch on a couple of things, property taxes, um, was interesting discussion. I think we're hearing, uh, a lot. I will say some of the reps were receptive and understand the concerns of it. Some of them, uh, don't want any taxes. Um, and the big thing that I took away, uh, being on the board, so the following morning, I had a board meeting for being on the Florida League of Cities and there was some discussion between us on some of the legislative action, uh, the bills that were following. And somebody brought up that, you know, we, we're not really too concerned about it right now because, um, they just might be laying the groundwork for later on. And then somebody brought up, yeah, I thought that way too, until an email that we just got. Um, so just be prepared, I don't know what that entails all yet. Um, so just be prepared that I might have some more information for you all as, as we get more and what's being requested. Um, there's definitely, and I get it, uh, uh, the big thing is the state feels that they want to help the citizens and protect the citizens. They feel that local governments sometimes will interfere with that. So I, I do think there's a lot of good intent there. Um, sometimes I just almost think that they think through all the ways of how it plays out. So, get it, I don't, I don't want our citizens to have to pay taxes either. How do we fund roads? How do we make sure that they have clean drinking water? How do we do, protect them with public safety? And so the biggest thing, um, and this happens with a lot of cities, uh, our public safety budget is higher than what we bring in with ad valorem taxes. So just keeping that in mind of property taxes equates to public safety. Um, so that, and I will tell you, the Live Local, uh, the stuff that they're proposing, um, is, is shocking. Um, so they're still working, they're fighting. Our lobbyist with the Florida League of Cities is really working hard to get some of that, uh, fixed and corrected. It has to go through different committees, so there's still some room and time. But just know that they are working really hard on it and understand. Um, also, seeing that this is probably our, um, city manager's last meeting, I, I definitely want to acknowledge him publicly. Uh, being on the council going into my ninth year, uh, I think, uh, city manager started two years prior to me. And I don't think people truly understand or appreciate the things that he has done behind the scenes. Um, Titusville went through a lot of tough times, um, before I got on council. And coming into it, just seeing the stuff that our city manager has worked diligently for, that has taken time, um, our budget is phenomenal, um, to get us to that level. One of the things I had mentioned to him was, I really want to lower our millage rate. How do you do that? You need to have properties that have, are paying ta- uh, taxes. So the more people you have paying into it, we can lower our millage rate to try to even it out. Um, we have lowered our millage rate consistently. Um, emergency management, I stand by this and I say it every chance I get, that is the one area that our city manager has thrived in, that I've always felt comfortable and safe in, um, as a city, that he would take care of us and lead our team and take care of the citizens. Um, having to go through COVID, unprecedented, um, and handled that extremely well. Again, all of our hurricanes that we've gone through, record-breaking hurricanes. Um, another thing, union negotiations, when I talk to my colleagues, can be very tense. Coming in, and Member Nelson probably remembers this, um, we had great relationship with our police union. Our fire union was, it was a little difficult at first and I remember having conversations with our city manager, uh, just give me a couple of years, I'm working on it to make sure that we can fund it. Please trust me. And I did, and he did. He delivered then, uh, like above and beyond, um, and our fire union has been great. Um, organizational changes, as we, as we have navigated, um, just as a city, you know, what the org chart looks like, um, he was very proactive in seeing, okay, where can we consolidate? Who can maybe take over a different department? How can we empower our department heads to lead and have the freedom to come up with new ideas? Every time we have a different department come up, code enforcement, police, fire, community development, hey, we're thinking about doing this, we want to be a leader in this. That doesn't just come out of the blue, that comes from the top as a leader. And, um, again, I think sometimes there's a lot of noise. Can we always improve? Absolutely, but we have been very blessed. Um, I've been around City Hall a lot more since our city manager's announced that he was retiring. I, I will tell you consistently, people that have been here for thirty-plus years have said, this has been the best city manager to work for. Um, as I've talked to other individuals around, again, the state, hearing their stories, we have been very blessed. Um, so I just want to say thank you publicly for being here, for leading our city. Um, it's been great to work with you. Yep.
Thank you, Member Stokol. Member Nelson?
And I just want to say, you remember years ago when we said, work on the infrastructure, work on the river? We are so far ahead on the B map. We are so far ahead in our, our part of the river. Our part of the river looks so much better than everybody else's. And I have to give you credit because I don't think we would have this except for the work that you did with staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you. City Manager?
City Manager's report, I've got one action item. Staffs requesting council's direction on scheduling to facilitate FY '26 strategic planning sessions to receive council input regarding the revisions of the current city's strategic plan based on citizens' feedback received during the recent round of citizen council and public engagement sessions. The workshop will be facilitated by Kristin Baki of Lead Brevard. And we presented you with some dates at your last meeting and we couldn't really come to consensus. So, we've given you three additional choices of dates towards the end of April for your consideration.
Counsel, I can't really make a motion, but if we could do April 30th, that would be ideal for me. But, Member Nelson?
I will not be here April 30th. Could we do the 28th?
It's the student awards night.
24th? 24th? How does everybody feel about the 24th?
Yeah.
I'm good.
24th? All right. Motion second approved.
Megan, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, good. And second, with this being my last meeting, I'm recommending to council to appoint the assistant city manager for the next two weeks to allow you to have an agenda item to consider an interim at, at your next council meeting.
Thank you, City Manager. Do I have a motion to make Mr. Bate the acting city manager?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion from the crowd? All right, seeing none. Any further discussion from council? All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations to Mr. Bate. And on to the city attorney's report.
Is that him? We've never met him.
All right. All right, City Manager?
On to the city attorney's report.
Counsel, you have my report. The first item is city attorney resignation. I advised city council a few days ago of my intent. Probably the most difficult decision I've ever made in my life. I've been here 20 years in this office. I was born in Titusville. This is my home. Anyone that thinks this is an easy job, it is a very trying job. I still have kids that are somewhat young at home I'd like to spend some time with. And it was a difficult decision, but me and my wife, when we talked about it and thought, this is the right decision for our family right now. And then as we decide what to do in the next chapter of our lives. But I've enjoyed working for the city. I've tried to do my best. And I, I did provide a date of the 16th, which was 60 days pursuant to my contract. But if council would like to talk about a different date, that, that's fine. Or if you have any questions for me. But it really is just, between years and what was going on, we felt this was right for the family.
Thank you, city attorney. Can't thank you enough for your service to, to our city. 20 years is, it's a long time. And, you know, Titusville is grateful. Member Muscoso?
Yeah. Mr. Brum, I would like to thank you. I think you're the person in the city that I've spoken with the most and I have a lot of respect for you. And you were always there to help when I had questions, whether it was your job or not. And I know I pushed back a bit, but I appreciate you and wish you the best.
Thank you. Member Stokoe?
Yeah, this one, this has been probably a really tough year. I understand, you know, us doing our job of leading the city. But what I really hated, I think, for this year is it's gone above holding people accountable and having high standards to belittling and demeaning people that have dedicated a lot of their time and effort to our city. And this, it makes me really sad because Richard is a very good man. I came in here to deliver Christmas cards, I think on Christmas Eve, in Richardson's office, working on a Sunday. Whatever, I can't remember if it was Christmas Eve or it was a time that nobody was here. And I don't think he's missed a meeting. And you're, I know at least since I've been here, have you missed a meeting in 20 years? You just don't find people like Richard. His character, I've not always agreed with Richard. Richard and I have had discussions, but I've never questioned his character or why he does what he does. I've just really appreciated working with you. I'm sorry for some of the stuff that you've had to go through and deal with. I just, people should not be treated that way. And it's really, this one was a tough one to see. And, yeah.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Member Nelson?
I'm going to miss you. You're a good guy. And I don't want to hurt Scott's feelings, but sometimes it's easier for an attorney to talk to another attorney. It's sort of like that common language that, you know, I can say things and you understand what I'm saying. And you can say things, and I get it. You've been, you've been great. And I agree with Member Stokoe.
Thank you.
Yeah. But I agree that the family is more important. So, yeah, sorry to see you go.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, Richard, I'm sad to see you leave. And, you know, the fact that you were able to put up with all my antics and all my jokes and stuff. You look so, you know, just calm anytime I say stuff. But we really appreciate you. Oftentimes, the public only sees you at the county, at the council meetings. We see you the majority of the time. And there's so much work that's done behind the scenes that nobody ever sees or nobody ever really appreciates but us. And I'll say, thank you. And I'm gonna say, we're really gonna miss you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. City Attorney?
The next thing you'll need to consider is selection of your next city attorney. And of course, unlike a city manager where you may do a national search, you know, you have to be licensed to practice law in the state of Florida. A lot of cities will, will list the ad on the city, county, local government. Indeed, I would recommend your director HR department, of course, can do that. And they have a salary study that's been referenced before. And I'm not sure what that is, but they'll have a range. And if you want to advise them to move forward with putting that position out based on, you know, that's up to council, of course. But do you want them to come back to you with a salary range? Do you want them to advertise it based on the study they have? That's something council needs to decide.
Thank you, City Attorney. Member Nelson, I'll call you on, yeah, one second. You know, my thoughts on it is on top of. Please don't interrupt. I have the floor. I know, ma'am, please stop. Please stop. You do not have the floor. All right, so I agree with the city attorney that we should, you know, put it out, ask HR to, to, to do their thing in terms of recruitment. I think in terms of the interviewing process, I do not feel that, well, with the exception of Member Nelson, are qualified to judge a attorney's ability to, to know the law. So, I think we might need to look at asking some other local attorneys to help conduct some of those interviews till it gets to a final selection where everybody's qualified. But I just wanted to share my thoughts as to that. I, I don't, I couldn't hire a doctor because I couldn't judge their capabilities because that's not my wheelhouse, so. Member Nelson?
I think there are a number of attorneys in our area that do this kind of a lot. So, I don't think that's really a problem, finding another city attorney. So, I think given the, putting it out with the range from the salary study works. And putting a group of senior staff together to narrow it down to maybe four or five. And then provide us with those resumes so we know how much work they've done, what other studies they have represented. I think that works.
Should work. Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I mean, perhaps we can put together a, a committee. We each appoint a person that could help oversee it of like an attorney or something. I don't know. I think, and Mr. Brum, you know, you'd be willing to be part of that or you just want a clean cut and get out?
Member Stokoe?
Yeah.
I'd be glad to do whatever you want me to do.
Yeah, my, I would guess my question was for a city attorney. Have you seen it where we would bring in some attorneys to maybe, that have different expertise to?
Well, the city's only had two attorneys in the last 40, 50 years, so I haven't seen that. I, I haven't seen the process with other cities. This is the only city I've worked for.
Okay.
So, I can't answer that question. I can't tell you what others do. I can just tell you that they do advertise and each city will probably have their way of how they want to handle it. Whether you want to have a committee or whether, you know, you want to have, you know, I think you could think about that. And, and maybe it's your next meeting if you want to think about how you want to do that and research a little. Each member may have some ideas. And you could come back at your next meeting and say, well, right now you could give direction. Let's go ahead and put the ad out if you want to do that. And if you want to leave it up to your HR director to set a range based on the study he has, I, that's up to council.
Yeah, I could see us bringing in some attorneys that maybe have like different experiences with this. My only concern is if it's local, just making sure we don't have like a conflict of interest there with some of the attorneys that maybe, you know, frequent, that we know in there. I would want them to be a little bit neutral regarding it. Just, I'd like to see, I think, I mean, we'll see their resumes, kind of like we're going to see the city manager's resumes. Yeah, I don't know. I'm open to it. Maybe we can discuss it and see, again, I guess this is gonna be our third time in, what, you said, 40, 50 years? So, do, I just don't, I don't know how the other, do you know how the county does, did it for their search or?
No, I don't. I know the county was unique in that they had, I think when Mr. Knox retired, they had internal, I think Eden came in. And then when Eden retired, that they brought someone up from.
Yeah.
Right, and then, and then, so I, I cannot speak to, to their process.
Okay. I'll reach out to some of my colleagues.
I know that some cities have, you know, private firms that, that handle their representation as far as not being in-house.
Okay.
So, but, you know, I would suggest if you want to research that, if you want to talk to any others and have their ideas and how you think the best approach for you to do it.
Okay.
Because I think it's very important on how you handle that. Someone you're comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Again, that's hard.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Thank you, City Attorney. I think with the consent of council, we'll direct staff to go ahead and put, put out the ad with the salary study that, that they have in place.
Mayor, if, if I could add something.
Yes.
Our HR department is standing by and, and we have some recruiting tools that we can use. We have some benchmarking data. We have, you know, position descriptions ready to go. And also, an extensive network through the Florida League of Cities and, and other venues to, to canvas available talent. And I think it would be a good idea, once we get a, a pool of potential candidates, to have subject matter experts like other attorneys come and evaluate them. So, we can take the lead, HR, and, and report back to council on our progress and, and get started right away on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bate. So, do we need to make a motion to direct staff to go ahead and put that ad out there?
We have card.
And I have one comment too. That's okay. I know that our former, former city attorney Dwight Severs would like to be part of that. If that's something we're open to, if we do a committee. I mean, he has a lot of experience as well.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston. And I've been in this community for over 50 years. First came to Florida in about 1952. I sent you a letter today addressed to the governor about the wild and crazy, dangerous things that you're doing here in Titusville. And what I would like to do is I'd like to have that letter sent to anybody who's becoming the new city manager. Because I will get it to him. I'm fed up with what this dangerous policy you guys do. How in the world can anybody talk to me and keep a straight face and spray for several months? Women, children, and babies, homes, cars?
Mr. Johnson, I'd just like to point you to the topic at hand, which is directing our HR staff to put out an ad for city attorney.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Exactly what I'm talking about. In other words, you are also, in other words, you voted with, with North Brevard, but Rex is, you said, you don't want to go ahead and, and stop this sewage. That's the way I understood that you voted. So, I can understand your position. You're defending this nonsense. Shame on you. Shame on you, Mr. Congress.
I just don't understand what that has to do with our HR department putting out an ad for city attorney.
I'm telling you what he's going to be facing. And, and HR should know. I'm letting you know tonight. And I'm letting you know also by that letter. I want that letter to go to him. And if you don't send it to these, these candidates, I'm going to send it to them. Because what you are doing is dirty politics, dirty stuff, and it's awfully illegal. And for example, you have never cleared up this issue about the, the fraud that's been committed by Mr. Larisse. Never, never done it. I haven't, it's all, the, the, the report doesn't exist. What is the, Geocentech never, never wrote it? Doesn't even exist. Mr., our attorney confirmed it, that it exists and it doesn't. This is, this is terrible what's going on here. This is crooked. This is fraud, what you all are involved in. It's fraud. What, what kind of a city is this? It's crooked. So, I'll let it go at that because I want, I want you to know what you're, you're up against. I'm up against the truth. I don't know what God's gonna do with you guys. Because you're not truthful. I mean, this, this is darkness. This is the depths of darkness is what you are starting with. I mean, how you can possibly deny what you're doing? So, I don't have, I don't have a lot of respect for what, for disobeying the law. And this is bad. I don't, I don't see, you have a double standard. You should never do that. Shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bate and the HR staff. City Attorney?
Next item. I'm sorry. Next item under my report is the update on City of Titusville versus Speak Up Titusville. Attached to the copy of the order vacating the order on final summary judgment that was entered in November and entering final judgment in favor of the City of Titusville pursuant to the Fifth District Court's ruling. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Seeing none?
Next is Indian River Force Main Replacement. It says defense counsel, but what's going on there if council's not aware? You know, that was a rather large job that the contractor one day just pulled off the job. It's an eight and a nine million dollar project. There's probably, you know, a million dollars left. They're towards the end of the project. You have to abandon the sewer lines and has to be done properly. We have some claims from subs that had not been paid. We have retainage. We have sent letters to the contractor to cure and demand they comply. They've all come back. So, they're, they've walked off the job. That's the easiest way I can tell you that. And they're ignoring us. We do have a surety involved. We have met with the surety. We've had conversations with the surety. We, we're up to date with the surety. So, my hope is that utilizing the surety on the project, we can either utilize some of our expertise. I don't know if Kevin's not here, but his group, we have some contractors that are qualified to do it and whether or not they're gonna allow us to tap into those contractors we're comfortable with to do the job and complete it or whether the surety is gonna want to hire some other contractors. is going to want to hire some other contractors to finish it, and they'll pay for that. Some of the nuances of that is the fact you have your subs, and their claims, and whether they've been paid or not, the retainage, and the issues with the contractor, whether he's doing anything or not. And so with the purpose of this, and Kevin Cook has sent me an email asking, that they think it'd be appropriate to bring on a contract attorney for consultation. It's not the kind of thing where you bring them in and they take over, but we'd have to have a retainer, it'd be an hourly thing, that we could have them look at some documents, help us with the retainage issues, help us with making sure we get the proper releases, dealing with the surety. Because it is, it's a very specified field when you're dealing with surety work and contractors. So that's my advice. I know Kevin has asked for that, so I put it under my agenda. I believe there's a retainer. Let me pull it up. From Sasso and Sasso, who are board certified in construction law. This was going to come to you previously, you often remember that? That was an attorney with Gray Robinson, but he had a conflict because he had done work with the surety, so we couldn't do that. So that's why that didn't go any further. But he was recommended, Sasso and Sasso, who is board certified. I spoke to him. They were willing to talk to us without charge, and, you know, let us, you know, look to their experience. And as I said, we haven't waited. We've already got our notices out to the surety, we've got our notices of default out. But I think it'd be important to have someone, an expert in that field, as we go through it, to assist us on an as-needed basis. So the retainer letter is there. I believe we've agreed, they've agreed to reduce their rates. I don't want to misspeak. It's $250 an hour, I think originally it was $350 or $450, but they've agreed to reduce their rate to $250 an hour. So we're asking for our authority to sign this engagement letter, and if signed, then tomorrow we will be reviewing some of the documents we're going to be sending to the surety and to the subs, because we really want this job done as soon as possible.
Thank you, city attorney. Member Nelson?
I think it's important to get somebody who only deals with contract law.
Yeah.
And the fact that they're board certified gives me some assurance that they have the knowledge, the expertise that we want. So I would say, let's do it.
And again, this is coming out of the, Kevin has an account, it's not a large one, don't expect this to run into a lot of money or anything like that. But it'll, it's his account that he has for outside, so that money's already, already set aside for that.
Especially what we're talking about, what, another million dollars that needs to be finished?
Yeah. We're hoping that there's enough there in retainage to finish the job. But you don't know, when you're bringing in another contractor to finish another contractor's job, you know. But we're hoping that that's the case. If not, we do have the surety, and they've been working with us so far. This same, in fact, this happened in West Melbourne, same contractor. And I think they were not as far along as we are, so I think they have probably some bigger issues there.
Vice mayor?
Quick question. With the surety bond, if there isn't enough money, the surety bond should be enough to cover the whole thing, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're not at risk with this at all?
No, what we're looking at right with the surety is, you know, are they going to bring in the contractors on their dime? Are we going to bring in our contractors we're comfortable with? And they said they really didn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So we've already had several conversations with, you know, the surety, and.
Okay.
We're working diligently on it, but now we're getting to that point where, and it may go a few more weeks, I don't know that I'll still be here, but I have been involved. But it's nice to have that expert on hand to answer some questions as necessary when we're looking at the wording of the release or dealing with the subs, and making sure that, you know, we're handling it properly.
Thank you, city attorney. City clerk, any cards?
Yes, one card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, you know, I don't like to, I know you have to do something, but my concern is, what you're starting with is, I'm not pleased with. In other words, I'm thinking about, you know, if there is such a thing as going up there, and you're going to be a mansion, what are you going to have, a shack, an outhouse, or what? Because what you've been dealing with is dirt. You've been treating me, I've been treated dirty, and the public's been treated dirty. So I hope something's going to happen, because Mr. Larisse has gone to my church. He's gone to my church, and he's talked to his pastor, and elders have talked about removing me from membership, from things that they won't tell me about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can I have a motion?
Move to authorize the city manager to execute the retainer agreement with Sasso and Sasso for these services.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further council discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I believe that takes us to the end of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.